You ready to go? My illustrious attorney, he's all ready.
All right. All right.
We're going to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this November 1st at 5:00. We'll have a roll call to begin with by Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett is here. Mr. Deloach.
Here.
Mr. Loper.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
Everyone's in attendance. I ask everybody to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Gracious Father, it is so good to be here amongst these friends and constituents and these board members who serve so diligently. I thank you for them and the faultfulness in which they deliberate and consider and put the interests of this county first. I just thank you for this type of leadership. Thank you for our staff and how they work hard, Father, to provide the information we need to make decisions that will be pleasing to you and will bless our constituents. And we ask for your wisdom as we consider all the input tonight and that decisions we make and the way we carry out this business will be glorifying to you. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right then, item number five, we have our agenda before us. There is a correction to the typing, not an amendment to the agenda. I think the original printout of item number 12 and 13 came out as the same item. The agenda you should have before your 12 and 13 are separate items, so we're not asking for an amendment to the agenda, just noting there was a printing error to start with, but you should have the correct agenda. So there are no other, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. You have the minutes of the October 18th, 2022 regular session meeting. I was not a part of that meeting, but if you have read them, you have any corrections or additions? If not, a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, the minutes pass unanimously. Welcome everyone in the pub tonight. Good to see you, having your attendance. Should you wish to make any remarks about any agenda items, if you'd come to the microphone, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name. That helps our clerk with her record-keeping on that. All the correspondence for this meeting, the documents for this meeting are located in the clerk's office. They've been on our website. Hope everyone's had a chance to review those and are ready to speak at the appropriate time. But I ask that you make your comments particularly to the agenda items and not to other items that are not on the agenda tonight. That would be very helpful. We have a lot of business to cover. And with that, we have an appearance tonight, resident Lowry Ferry, residents of Lowry Ferry Road to discuss road conditions. This is for 5:15, but are you prepared to go ahead and make that presentation now? Who's making that presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ms. Cora Gaines. I'm a resident of 688 Lower Ferry Road. And we have been wondering and probably disappointed in our road. We have a lot of, we have, the road is so terrible. Let me just get to the point. The road is just so terrible, really terrible. And a few years back, we put our Lower Ferry Road on the list to be paved, but it wasn't paved. And we're inclining, we're requesting that our road, you know, be fixed so that the residents and the ambulance can come through there, or maybe the fire department can come in, because it takes you about maybe 15 or 20 minutes, and I live about two minutes from the highway. And it takes me about 15 or 20 minutes to get to work, really. And we have some real deep burdened concerns about our road.
Okay. This petition, I'm assuming, is related to that road that you're talking about there?
That is the petition, sir.
Kim, do you have any information regarding? I know we have, we've done some study and some work trying to grade our roads and prioritize where we can put the monies in the best places. Can you help us address where we're at on that?
Yeah, I can. And I actually, Commissioner Deloach had asked me to pull these reports a little while back, and you are 100% correct. And so, just so everybody knows what process we went through, we had our entire road network analyzed. Essentially, they sent vehicles around there, they scanned the surface, the condition of the surface, and they determined the condition of each road. And they kind of did it on a level of excellent, it goes from the top to excellent, good, fair, critical, and lost. And you are correct, on Lower Ferry Road, while it is an ash road, it, nearly all of it, or a vast majority, at least half of it rates as lost, the worst condition that we have, with the other half being critical. So, you know, it is a road that are, that was analyzed is that we have to go out there and address. The issue was, most of our road funding that we're doing now is based on the funding sources that were kind of designated a year, years in advance, like T-Splo-st. But with, we do have some funding, let's say, coming up with either Splo-st or L-MIG, which is a local maintenance improvement grant from the state, that we could look at doing this something for. However, since that could take over a year to get done, one of the things we're looking on doing, we do have local crews that can go out there, at least as a temporary fix until a full fix can come, to do the chip seal surface on it.
Have we never done a chip seal surface on that one?
That, um...
No, we have not.
Okay.
It's on the list, but we have not at this point. I met with this group, I don't know, about a month ago. We met for about an hour here at the complex, and I let them know that I've ridden out a road, and it is in bad shape. But the next round, the next round of money would be either Splo-st or L-MIG, and we would be coming up with a new list soon. And so that would be my chance to, you know, be able to do something on that road.
Okay.
And in the meantime, because that might be 2023, we might address with L-MIG money.
Well, it's already on the chip seal list to at least make it more passable for you while we wait to kind of permanently come up with a solution for it.
Can we reprioritize that so maybe that gets done?
Yeah, I think it's about, it's about fourth on it, on the list.
So the next four months, we should see some...
Yeah, and it just depends on, we can only do it in warm weather, but it's our local crew, so we can, if we get, you know, even if it's December, we get a series of days above, I think it's above 30? Yeah, I mean, decent temperature days. Overnight, we can send the crew out there to get that kind of temporary treatment done to it. And then, well, Commissioner Deloach and I work on funding the permanent solution.
Okay, my concern is that we've been waiting for this road so long, and it's been on the list. And my concern is, the truck come by and put a little spot there of whatever it is, and it gets worse and worse and worse. It's so bad until on the, on the lever part of the road, you almost got to turn on another guy's lane to get by. And it's very serious, it's very serious. So, and I hear what you're saying.
With the chip seal, if we can move that and get that done next, before Christmas, it's not going to be a patch. There's the emotion they put down in the rocks, they roll it, and so it's a lot different than a patch. And that should get us into next year. If we can get on the L-MIG list, we can get that thing paid for you next year and be done with it. So, but we've done a lot of work trying to research the roads and prioritize and put the funds to it, but it sounds like that's when we need to get paved in 2023.
Okay, sir.
Chip seal will go a long ways to helping you get to the spring of next year.
Okay. I got your word, I'm going to be looking for it, sir.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time with this. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if staff can request before we move into old business, if we can address the proclamation?
Sure.
Under new business.
So we're going to go past the consent agenda, go into the first item under new business?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. If teachers don't mind, so that those who are here for the proclamation, don't take that long, we're going to go to new business number one, and then we'll come back to our consent agenda and work through our agenda tonight. So we have a consideration to approve a proclamation celebrating November 6, 2022 as Retired Educators' Day, and my wife will appreciate that, since she's a retired educator, and I know you will as well.
Yes. I'm Pam Andereg. I'm the president of the Retired Educators' Association here in Effingham County, Georgia. And these are two of our officers, Patsy Ziegler and Kim Johnson. So the governor proclaims a Retired Educators' Day every year. So that's why we're here.
And how much bonus do all our educators get for this proclamation?
I wish there was money attached to it, but there's not.
Go home and tell my wife that she's getting an extra check this month. We do have a proclamation that the board would like to read tonight. I'm going to ask our clerk if she would read that for us in celebration of our educators in this county and all across our state. Pam, we appreciate you and all our teachers who have worked so hard, and we have the best educational system in the state, I believe. And thank you for your input. So if you read that proclamation, then we'll vote.
Yes, sir. The proclamation reads as such, "Celebrating November 6, 2022 as Retired Educators' Day. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 6, 2022, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia, and whereas there are more than 141,000 retired educators in Georgia, 32,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators' Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, the Effingham County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the day of November 6, 2022, as Retired Educators' Day, and call upon the citizens of Effingham County to observe said day in an appropriate manner honoring retired educators and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and seal of the county to be affixed this first day of November in the year of our Lord, 2022."
What day is the 6th on?
A Sunday.
Sunday? If it was on Monday, we could talk to Dr. Ford, see if he could give the teachers a day off on that day.
No, it's Sunday.
All righty. Want to get a picture, a second? Want to start, come down there? Okay. One, we're going to take the motion first.
Sure.
And then that'll be official, because I've already signed it. Let's make sure they're going to approve it, since I did already sign it. Motion to approve the proclamation celebrating November 6, 2022 as Retired Teachers, Retired Educators' Day.
So moved.
Motion by Mr., I think we said it at the same time. Yeah, I'm going to take Burdette's, and I'll do a second for Mr. Kiefer.
Take the second.
Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll get a picture right quick.
Thank you.
Oh, I bet I can take that.
So do you have that to... Can you get a picture?
That'd be good, Chris.
All righty. Our clerk has asked us if we can take care of item number two, because we have other guests here tonight, too, so they can be dismissed as well. So we'll take item number two in new business, then we'll go back to our consent agenda. Item number two in a new business is consideration to approve Resolution 048 to authorize a Second Amendment and restated intergovernmental contract between Effingham County, Georgia and Effingham County Hospital, and for other purposes. He's making the presentation of that particular.
You want me to, okay. Mr. Chairman, briefly on this, if you recall, we entered into essentially a revised IGA when the hospital did the refinancing of their bond. Obviously, that resulted in no additional debt burden or anything to the associated with the county. But there was a caveat on this with regards to their letter of credit that they had with Truist. Truist wanted a particular wording in there. We've had the attorney review this. There's no problem with it, it's simply a Menze agreement to take care of their bank's concern.
Just for clarification for the board, to make sure I have this right, I understand that this is a line of credit they've always had access to, and it probably should have been a part of the original documentation loan closing, that we're not committing the board to any greater millage. The millage is set, it just allows it to cover this should, if it's needed for the bond, it comes first.
That's right.
If there's any leftover, they could use it to cover this if they need to, but our obligation does not increase. But it does give them that line of credit for those cash flow situations that they, that a lot of businesses...
That's correct. And it is one of the things we discussed that we wanted to accomplish for them, was to give them more flexibility with their cash flow and the line of credit. It's just that we didn't realize at the time, neither did their attorney when they were drafting this, that it was needed to be worded in the IGA, so.
Right, and the board might remember that. That's one of the things we did show in the analysis, is that they would be able to pay off the line of credit, some other things they had during the downtime with the COVID and the issues at the hospital. But we said that this would free up, not only give them some money back from the previous bond that was being held, but it would free up their line of credit, giving them a good cash flow situation. So I think it's probably a good thing overall, but didn't know if there's any misunderstanding of what they were asking tonight.
Our only question would be, are we shopping banks for the line of credit?
Not our bank.
It's not?
It's, uh, it's the hospital's bank.
Oh, I see. So we don't have anything to do with that or suggest or...
We're really getting back to what the original would have been, with the original law, where they covered the bond and a potential line of credit with a millage rate.
We're just reaffirming that millage rate.
That millage can be used for either one. Not increasing the millage or the obligation. Any questions, discussion? Do we have a motion for alternative one?
I make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper, to approve alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And I see Dr. Frank Bickelwitz with us tonight. We appreciate the hospital and the value it is to our community, and particularly growing. It's good to have such a quality facility right here in our county. Thank you for you and your staff and all that you do. All righty. With that, we're going to go back to the beginning and go to our consent agenda. There are three items on our consent agenda. Consideration, item number one, consideration to approve, to ratify, and affirm a recruitment marking plan for, with WTOC, for recruitment of firefighters. Item number two, consideration to approve, to ratify, and affirm enterprise vehicle orders for Effingham County Sheriff's Office. Item number three on the consent agenda, consideration to approve, to renew an agreement between the Georgia Department of Human Services, Division of Family and Children's Services, related to low-income assistance with water and sewer, water and wastewater services. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second Mr. Deloach, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll move to old business. We have three items under old business. Item number one is the planning board recommends denying an application by Cindy House as agent for, can't pronounce that. Tell me what that...
That's the three kids, first two letters.
Okay. Ensgarhey LLC, something like that, to rezon 72.15 acres located at 108 Godley Road from AR 1 to I 1 to allow for future industrial use. Road map number 419, parcel number 1A in the first and second districts. This item is postponed from September 6th.
I took it to planning board, so that's why I'm dealing with it tonight. Katie will be taking over other planning board items. This is, I'm Teresa Concanon, planning board, or planning manager. This, this application is for rezoning of, you see that the parcel is split into, the remainder is in Chatham County, so it is one larger parcel, but it happens to be cut by the county line. You did rezone a portion of it a few years ago for... You did rezone a portion of it a few years ago for a surface mine. At this time, Mr. House is asking to rezone the entire portion that's in Effingham County to industrial for future development. We do not have a concept plan, and that is actually the... One of the main reasons that staff are leaning against this. There's no concept planned. It's really a speculative rezoning to allow Mr. House to market it and sell it for development. He has assured us, and he's here tonight, and he can provide more information, that any prospective owner would most likely use... Jimmy Deloach Parkway, and that is certainly something that we can include in a condition if you were to approve this. We included some conditions where the planning board and Board of Commissioners to approve this, but staff have recommended denial. And the main reasons are that no concept plan was submitted, so there's really nothing to review. The portions that are in Effingham County, which are all we are concerned with, even though we know there's larger acreage, really can't sustain buffers, our industrial buffers. They're very narrow strips. It's really undevelopable as a discreet unit. Yes, we know it's part of a larger parcel, but we would need to see that concept plan so we could get the full picture, and then we could, you know, possibly be more favorably disposed towards it. Godly Road is not a designated truck route. There's no direct access to Godly Road from the parcel. That's the subject of the rezoning. There is a... There has been access through a portion of this parcel here in the past for access to the Big Nasty and for filming that's happened out there, but that parcel is not part of the rezoning application. So all in all, there may well be great potential here, but we don't have enough information to make a positive recommendation. So staff recommended denial, and the planning board also recommended denial, but Mr. House is here to add more information.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Teresa. We'll open a public hearing, and we'll hear for those speaking in favor of this rezoning to start with.
I'll start it off, and then I'm going to let my realtor here handle the rest. When I came to the planning board, there was some confusion about the rest of the property. It's 165 acres total. Part of that, we've already got approved for a dirt pit that Baker Construction is going to be digging. The remaining 94 acres is in Effingham and Chatham. It's in both. After the planning board meeting, I spoke to a couple of the planning board members. Mr. Alan Zipper came to me. He said, "What you need to do is not go down Godly Road or Stagecoach Road." I'm not sure which one. It's about half Godly and half Stagecoach. It's the same road. But he said you need to find it... But the gentleman buying it, I didn't realize that's what he wants to do. It's under contract. We're not speculating or trying to market it or anything. It's already under contract. And he wants to tie it to property that he has that comes right in there almost to us. He owns the two warehouses owned Jimmy Deloach. If you go down, Jimmy Deloach would be the first two warehouses coming from Bloomingdale, and he owns some truck stuff that's also there. So he wants to tie it to his road, which already has a crossover at Jimmy Deloach. So there would technically be no traffic on Effingham County roads whatsoever. It would all go to Jimmy Deloach and perfectly fine with that condition. And I have talked to the neighbors, and they said they would rather have industrial... There's about four people that back up to it that are in Effingham, and they said that they'd rather have industrial than residential development. They said they don't... They could deal with the back of a building better than they could people. So anyway, that's where we're at, and I'll let her go from here. If y'all got any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Cindy House. It's 72.15 acres in Effingham County. It does connect, as he was saying, it connects to Port 95 Properties, which already has an existing road that goes out on Jimmy Deloach. He's wanting to basically extend that road to this property. So it already is in existence and is being used. So basically, by allowing this to be rezoned industrial, you're allowing someone to just add to the property that they already have that's being used as industrial. And behind this has already been zoned industrial, too.
Is there a reason we can't? I mean, I would entertain table in this versus denying it if we had some type of concept plan showing that. Is there any reason why we can't get?
They were waiting to create a concept plan until they were sure it was going to be able to be zoned industrial. Right now, a lot of your purchasers want to make sure that the property's already zoned before they get in and spend all the money for the engineering for the concept plan.
Concept plan's cheap, though, versus we do this, and then there's no access. That deal falls through, and then we're stuck with industrial property that's got to come in and out of Stagecoach. That's what I'm...
Well, couldn't that condition be put in?
I'd rather have something from them showing for sure.
Right.
I would lean more to support it.
Right.
If we had that.
Could that condition be put in that should, you know, should it not?
Personally.
Okay.
It would seem like the concept plan might be a good thing for them, because you said they have property from another county that's budding this.
Right.
So they know they have property. They're doing something there.
Right.
It sounds like it would be very inexpensive to go in and include that concept.
Problem is, he's got, he has a 1031 that he has to do by January, and I don't think you could go through and get engineers to do what you're asking by then.
And bring it back in front of you.
He can do the 1031 on the property. He could do... I'm saying he could close out on the property in, is it Chatham County, the other property? He can do 1031 on that property.
Yeah, but the amount is for the whole property. In other words...
I think we could table it. They can come up with something. That's my fear. I don't want to approve anything without... I mean, we just... I'm not trying to be hard here. I'm just...
Yeah, I understand.
We've had people do this and then turn around. It happened with Roger. We get something completely different.
Well, I certainly, you know, I don't have an issue with it having to go to Jimmy Deloach. That's agreeable. It would not come down Stagecoach. We don't... And I see that where that would be a concern, because it's a small road, and you don't want the big trucks, 18-wheelers out there. I certainly understand that. Timing is an issue. He's talking about closing right after Christmas, or before, the 15th, actually. But I don't know how detailed the plan, what kind of plan would you need, or what would you?
Something showing that there's not a road, there's a road connecting all that.
Show his existing road and then show how he's going to tie?
Connect to your property.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, I don't...
Then you make that concept plan part of the condition. Is that what you're saying? That concept of that road part of the condition, if we had that? To tie it down?
To support it. I don't support it today.
Right. I'm saying, but if you had the concept plan with the road showing this, we're going to draw it.
Yeah, if we had that, I would rather table than deny to get us some type of plan on paper to say, "I hear what you're saying."
Yes.
"But I don't see any of that." And I wouldn't like that to be discussed in public with us, kind of getting the idea on paper of what the thoughts are.
So you want a sketch plan, I guess, is what you're saying, or?
I don't see a full-blown sketch plan, just showing how it's going to, the ingress and egress off of that property, how they're tied together.
Just a drawing of how it all ties together.
Yeah, it doesn't have to...
And my question, then, we could touch that concept plan as one of the conditions of this zoning. You have to match this concept plan.
Basically, yeah. I'm just saying, I want to make sure there's nothing coming in and out of Godly or Stagecoach Road as far as all these trucks.
That's perfectly... If y'all want to make that part of conditions, I don't have a problem with that. The problem is getting back on the agenda and how all that stuff works.
We can put it in two weeks.
We can do it in two weeks. We table it.
Just deny it six months. That's what I'm saying. If we go forward...
Well, we made that condition on Hodgsville Road, as far as how, what traffic could and couldn't, which roads they could and could not get on. So I mean, we can make that a condition.
For this use, but once it's industrial, might be something else come if this falls through, and then we got that traffic on the road.
Yeah, I'd love to see something myself, because we've...
If it falls through, I'll be rezoning back to AR-1, because I can't afford them kind of taxes.
Yeah, but I mean, we've got a planning board voting, though. We've got our staff voting, you know, on this. You know, I want to back them in this case, and I'm like, Forrest, I'd like to see what we're looking at doing here before we put a stamp. I can't jump on a zoning because somebody needs a 1031 exchange.
No, that...
That doesn't even factor with me. And I understand the financial part of that.
Sure, sure.
But I'm not going to jump on a rezoning, because if somebody needs to hurry up and do something.
Perster has engineers. He can get somebody to put us something together quickly.
If we could do it in two weeks, I think it would be fine.
Okay.
We can table it for 30 days if you want to, if you need more time to get the engineering on it.
I think he can get something quickly, you know?
They'll have to satisfy the staff as a concept plan, make sure they communicate correctly.
My biggest concern is the, again, if you can tie it together and go to Jimmy Deloach to stay off that road, I'd be more apt to support it.
That's going to happen. I mean, that won't be an issue.
If you agree with that, let me continue with the public hearing, because people came tonight, and then we'll see if there's any, anyone speaking forward besides the two that just spoke? Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to the zoning request? If you'd like to speak. See no one?
Question. Does this affect any of the Chatham County residents? And if so, are they alerted to this meeting?
When this was originally submitted for rezoning and went to planning board, we notified all adjacent property owners, as we usually do.
So it would matter, Chatham or Effingham?
Chatham County.
But the other, the county's already industrial. I mean, Chatham's already industrial, right?
Don't you send a letter to the city or the county?
What it's tied to, you're talking about going to Jimmy Deloach, Bloomingdale.
We send a letter to adjacent property owners, but I'm not sure that we have access to Chatham County.
We do not have access.
Yeah, we don't.
Hang on a second. Mr. House, wait a second.
I did that.
We need to get this conversations recorded. That's why I'm addressing the one that's at the podium right now. I know it. No problem. But the question originally was, does the people in Chatham understand? And I think there's a letter that goes to the Chatham County, where they have a chance to comment, right, on anything that's impacting them? Is that not correct?
Not as a standard...
Not if they're not a property owner. And so in this case, I mean, we can make that policy that we just simply send it to the government themselves, since we don't have access to the address database of the property owners, and just send it to, you know, whatever the neighboring jurisdiction is, the government themselves, the planning board of the government. But we have not done that, and we can, obviously.
Well, Bloomingdale sent y'all a letter about the project.
Right. We did contact Bloomingdale, or rather, we've been in contact with the city management of Bloomingdale about this and other matters on that road.
And they're supportive?
And he did actually... No, no. He did actually included a letter of opposition that's in your packet.
Okay.
The planning board, though, Mr. House gave me a letter from Port Whitworth, and that's in your packet, which did confirm that this is zoned for industrial use on their side.
Does that answer your question about the neighbors being identified and not...
Sort of somewhat. I just wanted to make sure that people are affected, whether they're our county or not. You know, fair chance of speaking.
And you had this request from Mr. House, didn't you? Did you hear the conversation?
Yeah.
Is it feared to say that Bloomingdale's concern was Godly and Stagecoach Road?
Right.
Yeah, they're purely concerned with the road.
That could be overcome, anyway.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. That's the only concern. I just want to get, you know, everybody who's actually affected.
You don't need an agreement what they don't... Industrial, I mean, that covers a lot of stuff. You don't need to narrow it down to what's going to be there.
It's going to be warehouses, I'm sure, but it's still going to have to fit our coordinates. My... You know, so I know that, we're checking that mark. What my concern is ingress and egress off the property.
You've still got to comply with it.
Yeah, I don't need it all. I don't need the whole warehouse thing. I just need to somehow show them how y'all want to get out of there.
And I would be clear, too, I guess particularly to staff, you're not really asking for a sketch plan. That'll come later. It won't be to that level. It'll just be some of the things you're wanting to see.
And it's easier to reference something if you've got something in front of you. Women are references, use of this road, not use of this road and so forth. It's like, you've got something we can refer back to and have on record.
I just don't want him, you know, possibly bogged down trying to meet the sketch plan requirements when it's not truly sketch plan.
This is for me to just, for this rezoning itself.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Just to show that this guy's personate, this is going to be how they're going to come in and out of that property. And it's not going to be on Stagecoach.
Bloomingdale has the same concerns, so it's like...
All right. So, Mr. House, if you don't mind, you're pretty clear what this commission is asking is a concept plan to be provided from the engineers for the next meeting, if they should choose to table it. Yeah.
I think what I'm... He's asking me, is he wants a drawing showing how it's going to connect to Jimmy Deloach. And a drawing where it's not going down Godly and showing access out to Jimmy Deloach.
If you provide that for us, then we can make that as a condition, that particular concept.
And as far as the neighbors, I have contacted each one of them, and they would rather have a warehouse, everybody that joined.
No one spoke against it, Mike, so...
And I can get that in writing, if y'all would like. They want, rather than... They don't want the residential development behind them.
That always helps if you get something seen on that, and I know there's no opposition over there in it. Just want to make sure we're not impacting people in the wrong way.
Got you. All right.
Y'all can put that together by the next meeting. We can review this then, 1st of December.
You want to do it?
No, 2nd, no. 2nd meeting in November, I'm sorry.
Which would be, the day is the 1st, right?
15.
So it'd be the 16th?
16.
The 15th.
15.
Yes, but in essence, we'll need it on Thursday. That's actually the deadline time, so.
Oh, yeah.
How many tables do we have? The first meeting in December? That gives them more time. It still meets the financial guidelines you needed.
But that's December 1st.
Okay. We'll make a motion to table December 1st?
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
I'm sorry, that's December 6.
December 6? Okay, December 6. So motion by Mr. Floyd to table to December 6.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it's tabled then. So if you can get that concept plan, it sounds like...
When do I need to get it to you? By what date?
You've got a couple of weeks now.
Yeah, you've got plenty of time now if we're doing it on December 6, so I would say by...
Thursday, two weeks?
The 18th?
Thursday, two weeks. Two weeks and two days. All right, so that makes the second reading to be tabled as well. And we'll go to item number 3 in old business. Consideration to approve the first reading to amend Article 2 of Definitions, Section 5.6, R-3 multifamily, and Section 5.8, R-6 single-family residential, and add a new zoning district, R-5 single-family traditional neighborhood design to the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. This item was postponed on October 18, 2022.
Right. What you have in your packet actually was supplemented by some corrections, and they were distributed to you today, so there have been some minor revisions made. And I'll just summarize them very quickly, if I can. The definitions, as you can see, it's in red, so it's really, it'll jump right out. The garden apartment, we expanded a little in the language there to make clear what we intended. Townhouse definition has been added. Uh, townhouse, a townhouse definition has been added. Planned, single-family home community definition has been added, and that is a single-family home community that is assumed to be built for rental purposes. So not multi, multifa- not multifamily, single-family, but most likely built for rental purposes. And those are not, that, those definition changes are necessary in order to make clear what we're trying to do in the R three and, um, proposed R five zoning district. The R three zoning district, uh, relatively few changes, um, clarifying the water sewer requirements. At the very top of it, we've added in the same language that is currently in our identity, single-family residential zoning district, which, uh, states that, uh, community or public water and sewer must be available, uh, to the site. And that just clarifies a necessary change there. Uh, we've added guidelines for townhouses, uh, stating the number that, that, you know, the maximum number that are in a row, uh, the lot coverage, um, the, the visual impact so that, you know, varying the setbacks of individual units to get some, some variety and some texture, uh, adding, uh, minimum setbacks, minimum, uh, area, uh, green areas, uh, streets having sidewalks, and that's just, again, clarifying current policies and standards, but stating them in the ordinance for multifamily, which has not really been in here before. Uh, we did add, um, per, uh, pursuant to whether the access management policy that sub, proposed multifamily subdivisions, and these would most likely be townhome developments, and we have seen some interest in that. Uh, townhome developments with a large number of units, we have included, um, item F here that would sort of split them up. Uh, units up to about sixty would be okay with one entrance. If more than sixty, you know, sixty-one or more, we would suggest two entrances, but that's only if it would be compliant with our access management policy, 'cause not every road can take that kind of, um, a- access, it can take the additional driveway. So it's something we included there for you to consider. It's, it would be pursuant to the access management policy, though.
In an R, in an R three, that's where we're gonna put our, um, the rental, allow the rental units to be, and we're gonna define, they're gonna be around the, the cities.
R three is all, well, we assume R three is, our, our three is multifamily. We assume for the most part they would be, that anything developed in R three probably would be rental, not always, but probably. Um, we have not included that language in the ordinance because the comprehensive plan should take care of that. The future land use map should take care of that. So that was something we considered including, but we did not include in the ordinance.
So some of the, so some of the stuff we see coming out from Atlanta, that, that will be addressed through our land use map. And we'll kind of define.
And, and I can address that. So, uh, what we're trying to do on, uh, when we, when the land use map comes out, um, is that we will designate, um, cor- corridors and character areas, um, uh, and, um, and sometimes intersections, major intersections as areas that are compatible to, um, to R three type zoning. Um, we didn't want to include that, um, in the zoning requirement. We wanted to include that in the comprehensive plan, uh, where, uh, R three would be appropriate. Um, and what we're, um, trying to deal with on the rental side is just so, to say that if you wanna do a, uh, a full rental community, even if it's detached, um, uh, that yet if you know it in advance, um, we're recommending, oh, it's gonna essentially be required that it be done in R three. Um, the R five, which you'll go into next, will allow you, uh, to rent up to twenty percent of the units there within the first year of the CO. Um, and that just gives folks flexibility in case, you know, someone gets deployed right after they buy a house or something to that effect. Um, and, uh, but the intent of R five zoning, uh, is really owner occupied. Um, so we're giving people the option, uh, that if you wanna have single-family build-to-rent communities, uh, even if they're detached, you have an option. It's R three. Um, but, um, uh, R five is, you know, we're, we're trying to gear that more towards the, uh, owner occupied.
And then, but then we'll kind of define where those rental units can.
That's right. Through the comprehensive plan, we're gonna say that, you know, these particular areas, uh, on the map are, uh, compatible with, um, with, uh, multifamily hired, uh, multifamily, uh, R three communities.
So, Mr. Chairman, my, my thoughts on this is, I find it hard that, that there's an area that we tell people that they just cannot do, um, as far as investment. So I know some of the counties around the Atlanta area have kind of done a hybrid, something like this. They still allow it, but they kind of define where it's gonna happen, so it's not everywhere across the county. So I feel like going through this, um, this process, um, we're still allowing it to happen, but we are keeping control on where it happens, so it's not everywhere. So I, I think it's a good start, just in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I was, as I was reading through this, but I was thinking I saw the language where we were recommending the R five and maybe the R three be located around commercial?
I, that was in the first.
Originally, and I just, I discussed that with, um, with, uh, Lee, um, uh, and the, the, the county attorney. Uh, and there was some general concern about how that's enforceable in a zoning ordinance versus, um,
Use plan.
in a, in a comprehensive plan which has your character areas and you can designate what areas that you, um, that you want, um, uh, to be a little bit more urbanized.
So what was in the packet, that's, that part of the language has been pulled out?
That's correct, and so the.
I thought I'd read that earlier. So basically what we're seeing is, just because we have R five or R three, doesn't mean it will be approved as zoning until we get our land use, and then we'll use that as a guideline of this is where you can do those items. We may say in District Two, there's very little place for this type of, of development, but in five, around the city, there may be more opportunity for it. Or, but there'll be, the land use will define where these zonings fit.
That's right.
So it gives two things, a, a order to it and then a quality to it. Okay.
And, and this more deals with, uh, also deals with, particularly in the R five, the quality issue.
Right, right. Okay, I saw that. I, I think I like it better that it goes with the, we're putting a lot of time and energy into our land use versus arbitrarily saying it's gotta be around a commercial area.
Right.
There may be a really quality area that, that affects around the schools or whatever, that's just as quality as commercial area, so that, that's good. Okay. I didn't realize that this was different from what I was looking at the packet till you, till you brought that up. Okay.
Right, but the one thing that does stay is the water sewer requi- availability of public or community water and sewer. And so that, that's the first, the first step, and then after that, we would then look at the location and look at proximity to services, and the comp plan and the future land use map will help us with that.
Do you think the way you've got the buffers, uh, for the multifamily, will that, do we need to further define parcel size? Or you think that's good enough to, so that you got a hundred square foot in the backyard and just different things like that? Or would you wanna define a parcel size for something like that?
We wouldn't define a parcel size. Uh, we have the fifteen percent open space, common open area, the same as we did when, when we.
Usable area.
Yeah, that's, out of the usable acreage.
Ours was in here, it was like six thousand something feet.
No, for, for multifamily, for R three, we're not so much focused on the lot size, because it could be townhomes, it could be garden apartments, it could be any number of multifamily arrangements, you know, three units or more at a time. So we're a little, we're a little less likely to, we, we do have a maximum percent of lot coverage, so if lots are shown, we wanna see that they're not completely covered with buildings, that there's a forty percent coverage, and that there is green space, to ensure that there is green space, uh, that, you know, I, I have photos I could show, but, you know, I looked at, looked up the, the garden apartment, uh, and it really does seem to be more of a, an attempt to bring greenness into an, an urban setting, but as we're not so much urban, but, you know, just bringing that urban and rural flavor together.
For us, it's bring that rural, keep that rural feel.
Right, so that's what, we've done that with open area, the common open area, to make sure that that, at least ten percent, you know, fifteen percent is common open area, but of that fifteen, you know, two-thirds of it has to be green. It can't be paved tennis courts or paths. It has to be green. And so there's, there's guidance there and what to be planted to. And we, we've made a few small edits here and there, just, um, as you can see, just, just saying, you know, where we would wanna see information, you know, bringing the sketch plan into it. So just bringing more guidelines and more information for the designers and for ourselves, so we're having these pre-application meetings. We can really flesh out what they need to give us and what we expect to see and have a better conversation. So that's the R three. Uh, the R six proposal is to.
That's one more, a couple more things on the R three for really townhomes that I noticed that it's, it's only accounts for second, two and three-story townhomes. Should we allow a single-story townhome? Another, some developments that are geared toward, uh, the elderly, they're all single-story, so, you know, there's no stairs and things like that. I've seen those built in that way. Um, and also the limits it to three or more in a row. What, would you not wanna allow two? I've, I've seen also developments that when you're making a, a turn, you can only put two on one. Uh, if it's a ninety-degree angle there, it's kind of, if you're parceling off and everything, it's kind of hard to get three on those.
We're, we're seeing six. Where are you seeing three?
Uh, I saw the def- I think it was in definition.
Ah, okay, well, I might need to fix that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
Yeah, and I, I think the reason we did that and we can correct it, I think we were thinking, if there's two, it's a duplex, but not thinking the way you're thinking, which is that there is going to be a configuration where they may only be able to fit two consecutively, and we can correct that.
Geographically, or not geographically.
Yeah, I know.
Well, they can.
You have to step down and move roofs and.
R three allows anything that's allowed in R two, which is duplex, so that, it would be encompassed there.
I see, so you could have a mix of townhomes duplexes.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't seen that.
That makes sense.
But I would allow the single story, 'cause that's, that's a value added to retirement community or something like that.
Right, right. Anything else with R three? Okay. So moving on, um, for R six, the, the plan was to suspend R six as we know it. There are currently several R sixes that are, or subdivisions that have been rezoned to R six, both under the current R six guidelines and then the previous R six guidelines, and those are full steam ahead. They're all, you know, we won't stop any of those. We still have all of the information. We'll still work with them through to the final plot process. But the proposal is to just suspend R six, given that the issues we've had there, and to take what we've learned and, and turn it into R five. So we, we, we used the, R six as a basis for R five and then just refined it, taking input from the consultants that are working on our comp plan and our other ordinances, taking their input, taking some staff research, taking some discussions, and just trying to come together with, to meet the needs that we see that, that are pressing at this time. And so R five, as we propose it, um, is, is very similar in, in layout to the R six, or the, it's very similar to what you've seen in ordinances before. Uh, the document is, is, doesn't have any red marker on it because it's proposed new, so there's no edits here. But it does start with the propos-, you know, requirement for water sewer availability. Um, the density that we discuss is point, going back to the point one-five acre lot, and the value there, first, first let me say that I, I've looked, spent all afternoon looking at our current R six portfolio. Nobody gets, there are some subdivisions with lots that are as small as point one-five, but on average, we're seeing lots, you know, per, for building, buildable acre that are much larger. We're, we're not seeing six per acre. We're just, we're just not seeing that kind of density. It's, it's about lot size.
Why did you put a minimum lot size in there?
Yeah.
You never can tell what you're gonna get.
And, and the feedback we've, we've gotten from developers too is that they like to see smaller lots, they like to see smaller frontage. It allows them to consolidate, you know, utilities and infrastructure, a smaller area. It allows more room for open space. It's certainly less costly to, to, for the concrete, for the paving, for all of that infrastructure, the pipes, for all of that infrastructure. So in a, in a way, what we're doing is trying to offer what we know is wanted, which is small lot sizes, um, smaller frontage, more compact development, and in return, we wanna see green space. We wanna see nicer, um, more interesting-looking developments, more variety in facades and, and better amenities overall. And I think that's what we've heard you say over the past few years, is we wanna see better developments. So I'll just skip through here and just make sure I cover everything. The, it, the, the. There's, some of the differences are going to be that we are upfront going to want to know about the management. Uh, generally speaking, we assume there's a homeowners association. On the final plot, we, we have a requirement to tell us what your, you know, who's managing your sidewalks, and usually it's deferred to a, a homeowners association. What we're going to want now is more information, perhaps even getting covenants upfront. Uh, so, so that's, that's something for, you know, for y'all to consider, but that's, we want to get more information upfront, have the developer be more vested in the outcome of the community and give us more information.
And, and if I can add really quick to that, um, the covenants are important. Obviously, if you're gonna have open space, you're gonna have sidewalks, you're gonna have amenities, you're gonna have to have a, a homeowners association, uh, when you're building it. Um, and so the coven- covenants is the entity that we're going to use to, um, restrict the rental, uh, percentage, uh, for that first year. 'Cause if you're building a rent to, uh, build-to-rent, it, um, you know, you can't build it and wait a year to rent it out. So, uh, it's that first year that we think if we can protect, um, we'd be, um, you know, we'd be, um, you'd, you'd have more of an owner-occupied community, which we're gearing towards. Uh, and also, um, it's, we're not saying no rentals, we're just simply saying it, you know, that it's capped out at, uh, at twenty percent.
Yeah, a year from CO four.
A year from CO, that's right. Um, and so, and let, let the builder, uh, and the homeowner, and the HOA, uh, in, uh, enforce that as part of their, as part of their covenants. And then we won't have to govern, um, a rental database and so on and so forth. Uh, it, it resolves the problem without an administrative burden and, you know, a police state.
So it becomes a civil matter.
That's right.
Uh, in this case, we have a maximum lot coverage of forty-five percent. Uh, you know, we'll see when, when the, when the design hits the, the paper, how this all plays out, but we're, we're assuming that we can move forward with that. And, and you see have the lot and building requirements, and again, this is a familiar format. This is how we've done it in the past. The side setbacks are the same as what we've been seeing on smaller lots. Uh, the open space requirements are fifteen percent of usable area, again, the same of what, as what we've been seeing. One difference that we've included, and this is really a staff wishlist item, roads and rights of way, and this is where we've clarified what road design, what, the road width and, and what it means, because there's a lot of wiggle room and gray area, and we end up with very narrow streets, people parking on both sides, fire trucks can't, or school buses can't get through. So we've put it up front. You can choose your road width, and it's based on our ordinance, existing ordinance requirements in different parts of the ordinance, but now it's here in the zoning. So a twenty-two-foot wide pavement, there's no parking permitted. We will need to see signs. We'll need to see that they've planned for that. And in fact, that would only be permitted with alley access. So we won't, you know, that's a great thing to encourage, you know, more innovative design. Twenty-eight-foot wide pavement, parking on one side, that's more common. That's probably where we might see the most, you know, designs landing. But we would also require signage. That would have to be on the site development plans. And a thirty-six-foot road, wide road, um, pavement would allow parking on both sides. You know, you'd get a very nice, wide spacious feeling from that, so that's a, that's a totally different type of development than we're seeing recently.
Any requirement on the alley size?
There's not a requirement on the alley size.
It could be a single lane, actually, then.
It would, yeah, it would be. But we could get into the details of that, and we could add some provisions.
I think you get, the single lanes, fine. I just didn't know if it was.
I like it 'cause it's off-street. I like it 'cause it's off-street. You still get, still get capacity.
Uh, we are adding a curb and gutter requirement, which, uh, you know, this is something that's in our road detail, it's in our pavement detail. So when we approve subdivisions, uh, you know, you know, AR two, I dealt with this today, in fact, an AR two subdivision that we approved. I sent them the road detail as part of their notice to proceed after the sketch plan, didn't realize it has curb and gutter on it. And we knew his intention was all along to do, to not do curb and gutter, so, you know, we just had a little parlay with the engineers and we worked that out. But we want, in, in high-density development like this, we want curb and gutter, we want sidewalks, we want, we want everything to be more orderly and, and clean. And so that's a, that's a requirement. It's not something we've had as a requirement in an ord- in a zoning district, but that's something we'd like to see there. Uh, sidewalks, again, you know, specifying and just putting it all out there upfront. The, this is in response to pushback we've gotten and, and omissions that have happened based on them being absent from the regulations. So this will hopefully ensure better development going forward. Uh, and another innovation is based on something we saw in other ordinances, which, and based on feedback we, we received from you. So subdivisions that are on a, on a major road, or even not a major road, maybe, maybe McCall Road or maybe an Ebenezer Road, but subdivision, you know, not to see backyards, but to require at least thirty-foot vegetative buffer before we see a backyard. Or if the house is designed, you know, to, to face the street, that they have essentially a frontage road. So we're seeing, you know, attractive frontage rather than people's private backyards. And that, that would be something we would, you know, again, would have more, more, we'd be more able to enforce that with it in the zoning district. So this becomes a very specific design zoning district. Uh, the parking requirements are very similar to what we are seeing. There's nothing really new here. It's just spelled out that the additional element in overflow parking be one per five units. The development standards are where we, um, are taking an additional step, and this is adding a, a bonus system so that in order to qualify for this, this zoning district, we wanna see more variety in, in facades. We wanna see perhaps, uh, rear-loading garages, and that would work well with the, with the alleys. Uh, we wanna see perhaps, you know, sunrooms at it. So there, there's a list here. We've added, we've given some, upmarked some with points, and some are just basically one point, and it's a mix and match, and, you know, a designer can come in and just decide, or the developer can come and decide, you know, where they wanna put the money. Do they wanna have, you know, interesting windows and gables? Do they wanna have porches? So it, it's, it's, the idea is to just to give them lots of room to design an interesting-looking place to, to live for the residents. Um, there are some guidelines then about percentages of, you know, garage and, 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 um, building facade, and that came from our consultant. They're, they're using their experience with other communities to, to make sure that we're not getting, you know, just big solid walls, but to ensure that there are windows and there's nice interest in the facades. Uh, there is a landscaping requirement. And then at the end of it, you know, we, we will, and we will, and I've started developing, um, a submittal form so that we can have a checklist as we're receiving these applications to make sure that we're, we're getting what we, what we want, what we need to get, and that everybody understands upfront what we're asking for.
So when someone comes to requesting R five, they'll have to have some kind of sketch plan design if you're gonna show a lot of the stuff you just mentioned about the facade and.
Right, and as I'm writing this, I, I really felt like it was falling into the PD, almost falling into that. So it's not quite a PD in that it's a single-use, it's not a mixed-use type of, mixed-housing type, type of development. But it really, I, I think our client for this is going to be the, the developers looking at, do I want PD? You know, do I want the R two, R three? And they may just go for PD, but if they want, are certain that they want single-family, if they want. And they may just go for PD, but if they want, are certain that they want single family, if they want to do the bill to rent.
Here's a tool, I've got density, but I've got things I have to go by that protect the homeowners.
And I think the key...
They don't have a lot of upfront, which is fine, that's good.
And I think the key thing is here, we're giving, we are giving builders an option. If they, you know, if they don't want to have to adhere to these requirements, you still have an R one option, which is about four houses per acre. You know, which will allow them a little bit, substantially less design requirements than what we're requiring here.
I'd like to see more of this in everything, really.
Right. And that's why we want to bonus the, the density and the lot size and the lot frontage to incentivize them to, to A, step up the quality in return, get that density that we're, that they want.
Exactly. So it works for both.
Yeah.
So like the zoning is gonna really help us have a better organized development for density that constituents need if they want rooftops for the restaurants.
There's a way to do it.
Things they want, but...
Because we need rooftops.
It's gonna, it's gonna give quality to the density so that we can all appreciate our suburban...
I think, I think staff did a good job.
Yeah.
I think this is a great start. We may have to tweak it later, but this has addressed a lot of my concerns.
Was this, was the planning board briefed with any of this? Were they aware of...
No, but we'll take it to them at their next meeting and give them a, we wanted to get your feedback to know that we're on the right track. We'll take it to them and give them an update.
I just, I need to...
Absolutely.
We could go ahead and do the first reading, talk to the planning board and then come back and do the second reading. We won't do second reading tonight.
Good point.
If we added the townhome definitions, we'd have to have two readings anyway, separate.
Yeah. All right. We don't have the second reading on anyway. I think it's anticipated the planning board would get it and there might be some tweaks. Do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second, first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously and we'll let the planning board put their input and we'll tweak it and we'll get a second reading in about 30 days maybe.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your hard work. Well, we are past the six o'clock hour, so we probably ought to suspend the new business and go to our planning hearings for those who are here tonight for those items. So I'm gonna flip over to the agenda to the planning board. We'll begin with item number one. It's a public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Alan Cott, or Cody, to rezone 23.38 acres located at 110 Buford Hill Road from AR two to AR one to allow for the placement of a second home for an immediate family member, map number 302 parcel number 115A in the first district. Is that Ms. Teresa again, or is that somebody else?
Katie.
You gonna take care of that one?
Good evening, gentlemen.
If I can start off, Mr. Chairman, just by saying that you're gonna notice a, a fresh face over here.
Do.
This is as a result of your voting to, we've, we've separated the position, we've, we've kind of separated the planning and the zoning. We've promoted Katie Dunigan, who's been with us for three years. She actually started off operating the, the entrance desk and has really, has kind of worked hard to really become our in-house expert on zoning matters. So with that, she's disappearing now for some reason.
Her clique share came from a different...
You can do it up there.
Oh. Okay. So with that, I'll, I'll introduce our new zoning manager, Katie Dunigan, and she will be taking over the planning portion of the meetings from, from here on out.
And because we have several items, I'm gonna recommend that, and you've got a lot of detailed executive summary, particularly these that probably were not going to be contestive on either side, our side or the constituent's side. You can make a real brief introduction. We'll do the public hearing and if we need more discussion, we'll allow it from the board at that point, okay? So something really brief on these items that are kind of new brainers.
Yes, sir. All right. This item, the applicant is requesting to rezone 23.38 acres from AR two to AR one to allow for the placement of a second home. The applicant's moving his parents onto the property and would like to take advantage of the second dwelling for an immediate family member permitted in AR one. Access is onto Buford Hill, but this is not a platted lot of Buford Hill subdivision. And that is pretty much...
Okay. I'll take it from there. I was, is there anyone tonight speaking in favor of this rezoning from AR two to AR one?
Hi, sorry.
Okay.
I don't know what I need to say.
You don't need to say anything, if you just want to state your presence.
Sit back down then.
Are you Mr. Alan Cody?
Second.
Mr. Alan Cody, did I pronounce right? I just recognized that he's here tonight speaking in favor. Is anyone tonight speaking in opposition during this public hearing? Anyone speaking in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion from the board if they don't have any questions.
Make a motion for approval.
Second. There's some, there's some, there's some conditions on here. So a motion to approve with planning board and staff recommendations.
Yeah, approval with staff and planning board recommendations.
All right. Motion by Mr. Floyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll do the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Alan Cody to rezone 23.38 acres located at 110 Buford Hill Road from AR two to AR one to allow for the placement of a second home for an immediate family member, map number 302 parcel number 15A in the first district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper to approve the second, I mean, the, yeah, the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So you're, you're good to go.
Appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Wendell A. Kessler as agent for MB Development to rezone 23.3 acres located off of Old River Road from PD to AR one to allow for a home site, map number 329 parcel number 26 in the first district. And we'll open a public hearing, let Ms. Katie give us a brief, like she did the last time.
The parceling question was rezoned in 2003 as part of Stonegate subdivision. The applicant retained ownership as well as reserved the right to amend lots within the subdivision. And he now wishes to revert the zoning to AR one in order to make it a private residence. Access will be out Old River Road.
Very good. Is anyone tonight speaking in favor of this rezoning from PD to AR one?
Wendell Kessler.
Recognize Mr. Kessler is here, owner of the property, and he's requesting that. He's in favor of it. Anyone in opposition tonight? Anyone like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and see if there's any questions or a motion from the board.
Make a motion, we approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. The second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Wendell A. Kessler as agent for MB Development. His request to rezone 23.3 acres located off Old River Road from PD to AR one to allow for a home site, map number 329 parcel number 26 in the first district.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So Mr. Kessler takes care of yours. All righty. Item number five, the planning board, public hearing, the planning board recommends approving an application by Effingham County Industrial Development Authority as agent for Effingham County Board of Commissioners for a variance located on Savannah Portside Industrial Parkway from section 3.38.9 freestanding sign size to allow for a sign size in excess of 100 square foot maximum for a sign in I one zone parcel, map number 329D parcel number 1C in the first district.
Yes, so the maximum allowable signage area for the zoning in this type sign is 100 square feet. The applicant is proposing 112 square feet. Staff finds that it is of appropriate size and scale for the location and the additional size will improve visibility particularly for truck traffic. Staff is recommending alternate, alternative number one, approval.
All right. Is anyone tonight wanting to speak in opposition to this? Anyone wanting to speak in opposition? I see Mr. Ryan Thompson wants to speak in favor of, probably.
Yeah, I'm just here for questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Ryan Thompson's here to answer any questions. But seeing no one speaking opposition, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Make a motion, we approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Effingham County Industrial Development Authority as agent for Effingham County Board of Commissioners. Request a variance located on Savannah Portside Industrial Parkway from section 3.38.9 freestanding sign size to allow for the sign size in excess of 100 square foot maximum for a sign on an I one zone parcel. This is map number 329D parcel number 1C in the first district. Motion for second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So, gotcha. Item number seven, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Scott B. Eisen to rezone 4.72 acres located at 7083 Clayo Killdeer Road from AR one to AR two to allow for a separation of a home site, map number 229A parcel number one in the first district. A little brief intro again, Ms. Katie.
The applicant is requesting to split this parcel straight on down the middle as shown on this plat. Neither parcel will meet the AR one threshold of five acres, therefore it has to be rezoned to AR two.
All right. Just kind of cutting to the chase, anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this rezoning? That would like to be heard at this public hearing? Seeing no one speaking opposition, is Mr. Eisen here, Scott? Okay. Just acknowledge that he's here representing his request. I'm gonna close the public hearing, hearing no one speaking in opposition, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Do the second reading, or have the second reading now, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Scott B. Eisen. Request to rezone 4.72 acres located at 7083 Clayo Killdeer Road from AR one to AR two to allow for the separation of a home site, map number 229A parcel number one in the third district. Motion to approve, second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And if I slaughtered your name, I apologize, but it's taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, I need to step down for item nine. I have a personal interest in that issue.
Okay, on the number, item nine, in the public hearings, if the clerk would note that Mr. Floyd has stepped down for this particular item. So item number nine, under planning board, public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Terry Griner to rezone .23 acres located on Gokart Road and Pond Road from B three to AR one to allow for a recombination of a parcel number 296 parcel number 46F in the third district. Ms. Katie, you got a...
The applicant in this case, it's probably easiest just to look at the proposed plat. Basically wishes to move his property to line down, which would give the adjacent property .23 acres, which would correct access and a structure that the current property line is running through. Because there are two different zoning districts, the .23 acres needs to be rezoned to AR one. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, very good. Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in opposition? Mr. Terry Griner here tonight? I see the applicant here, but...
I'll see.
We'll acknowledge that he has made this request anyway. And seeing no one speaking in opposition, I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve with planning board and staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve with planning board and staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number 10, consideration to approve the second reading with application by Terry Griner. Request to rezone .23 acres located on Gokart Road and Pond Road from B three to AR one to allow for a recombination of parcel number 296 and parcel number 46F in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself on the next item due to a banking relationship.
Okay. If we'll acknowledge on item number 11 that Mr. Floyd has returned from his recusal of the previous two items. And Mr. Deloach is recusing himself and stepping down to the audience on item number 11 due to a banking relationship. So item number 11, the planning board recommends approving an application by the McGrally Company as agent for Charles Leighton to rezone 65.29 of 97.36 acres located on McCall Road and Race Path Road from AR one to I one to allow for a surface mine, map number 391 parcel number 11C and 11F, map number 412 parcel number 24 in the fourth district. We'll begin with Ms. Katie, then I want to move a little different direction on this item, but we'll let her give an introduction if she would.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the planning board did recommend approval of this item with the additional condition that traffic access be allowed on McCall Road only. Staff has recommended denial. We have some concerns primarily with the road usage. It's not located on or immediately adjacent to a designated truck route and because of the large amount of resistance from surrounding residents. There is also some wetlands, which is in fact reflected on the plan submitted by the applicant. And I'm going to go ahead and pause there if I can...
Yeah, that sounds good. I, I, too, what I like to do with this, a little different, because I know we've had some general discussions as a board about high zonings and land surface mines being used in basically AR areas. And this is a residential area there. And we have talked about not only is that one issue, we're still looking at our land use maps, that's another issue I have for looking at this tonight. And then also, we had, I thought in our general discussion in our workshops was we'd like to see the big trucks like land disturbance or land surface mines be limited to state highways and truck route roads. And I noticed the staff, one of your recommendations to denial was because it was not on a state route or a truck route road. I know about a year ago, we went through a great time looking at what's the truck routes? Because these, these heavy trucks tear up our roads and they add very little to our economy to take care of the road maintenance. So I know we had those discussions and I, I just want to kind of get a general discussion, might help our constituents, if there's anyone tonight looking at this tonight that wants to discuss it, to see what are we thinking as a board? Are we, are we looking to limit these, as we discussed, to state highways, which I would recommend? And truck route roads, instead of, we've designed truck routes, I guess I'm kind of stating my opinion here before I get here from constituents, but we, we designed truck routes and then we approve things that put trucks on a road that's not a truck route. I have a little bit of conflict with that. And I believe we need to, until these roads are truck routes, if they ever are, they should not be considered in my opinion. But I want to get some feedback from the board, see if I'm hearing you right or is this like a legitimate concern? And then we'll let the constituents share their thoughts.
I do agree. I think we need to focus this truck traffic in these areas that'll be state highways or the, or something permissible. In addition to that, and this listed in the notes, there's 31 permitted mines right now, state permitted. There's an additional G dot mine, and that's what we have in our county right now. I don't know how many of those are operable, I'd like some more data. You know, we're always looking... Uh, you know, we're always looking at data and trying to make the best decisions based on data, not just feelings all the time. Although I know this is a heated issue and probably feel the same way, but I, I think we direct these things to where, you know, if we can, or unless it's a need, like with the G dot one, there was a need, we needed, th- there needed something, something in that area in order to feed Effingham Parkway, which is, everybody wants Effingham Parkway. So, I could see, you know, let's add one there, cause it, there, there's a need. Um, but I'm totally on board.
Also, you can't, you don't have a, a, what, three state highways goes through Effingham County, so.
Well, we do have more truck routes than that, don't we, or is it just state highways?
Right now, the only.
You have, you only have three state routes in Effingham County, twenty-one, one nineteen, and two seventy-five.
They're long ones.
Huh?
They're miles long.
Yeah, I know it, but what I'm saying, you can't find, maybe you can't find pits on that.
You know, Augusta has, uh, and it's, you know, in a, in a area of industry where you have the warehousing, you got that property there, that's a truck route that you could.
It's another truck route, yeah.
That you could have dirt mines on that.
It's like there's two in that area already, I mean, they're all over the, the same areas that.
That's what, some of this is probably inaccurate, because I believe there's one on Old Augusta Road showing, I don't think it's been active for a couple of years, maybe?
Yeah, we, we just pulled the, the licenses.
I, I know, probably has it closed out.
A lot of these aren't active. It could be a little, yeah, it's inaccurate, yeah.
And I, and I'd like to see that, at the accuracy, this inaccurate map, so we can look at this and say, okay, well, we got mines in this area, or we don't, or they're finished, or the, or they've been approved and they're just never been used. If they're approved and never been used, what's gonna happen to them?
Or either they blow them out.
They're supposed to revert back to AR one for our neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, basically, but to tie into what Reggie said, so if a property owner has great soul for this, we're penalizing him for the use of his property to sell that dirt and possibly just dig a pond to build houses out, or just have his own home site. Versus they're gonna use a county road to probably get to a state route, which we could restrict, which from McCall, two twenty-one.
You go to the closest way that you could get to a state route.
Right, the quickest way to a state route, like we do other trucks, I mean.
But these big trucks of land, they don't do something on them, they don't build warehouses on them. They don't have, big stuff on these trucks, they don't have dirt pits.
Not on our reuse, uh, plan, they shouldn't be building warehousing, what we're talking about today.
Well.
I mean, that, that's the whole thing, the reuse, we're trying to restrict the warehousing to our current industrial sites, I don't, I don't see.
Yes, I understand, but what I'm saying is, big trucks of land, that's usually what people know build on us, what I'm saying, unless we restrict it.
Uh, you know, I, a couple conflicts I still have in, kinda counting a little bit what you're saying, Mr. Floyd, is that, you know, they don't provide any economy for our, unless we need the dirt for development, I don't see development slowing down. They don't provide any revenue like, uh, the housing provides opportunity for, uh, sales tax because restaurants don't come because they have rooftops, I mean, there's something there, I know there's some cost to residential, but there is property values there as well that you gain from residential, if they would build, dig a pond and build a nice subdivision, you know?
Right. Can I?
Then you have, we're gonna come to a public hearing just a minute, I just wanna get some feedback from the.
We do pay sales tax on every load of dirt that we sell.
I know, but I don't think.
Every million dollars in sales tax.
We, we have a lot of costs though.
Yeah, but you're just saying that we don't pay sales tax, so I just wanted to clarify that we do pay sales tax.
I didn't say we pay sales tax, we don't have a lot of revenues from this. And where does that sales tax, just to clarify that?
Goes T S blast.
If, if it goes to Savannah, it's, it's where it's used.
I pay, I pay it to Effingham County every month.
I'm not sure that's correct, but.
I pay it.
I'm glad you do it.
I go on.
I'm glad we get it, but I'm not sure that's correct. I think it's where it's used.
It's, it's a, it's a.
But, but that's a different issue.
It's an item that's sold, and I have to pay it on the hauling and the material. So, a load of dirt, I pay, every load of dirt, I pay sales tax on this.
I understand, there, there's a legal issue there we won't get into tonight about where you pay it, I'm glad you're paying it to us, by the way.
Well, I, I just wanted to correct, you were, you were saying we don't pay sales tax, and we do pay sales tax, on every load of dirt, we charge it to the customer and it's give back.
For the cost it creates, and that, my opinion on that doesn't change, there's not a lot of revenue for the landmines to the cost, to the county for the roads, for heavy trucks. Roads are expensive, look at our budget, it's huge, you know?
But, well, we're gonna haul it from Old Augusta to McCall or from McCall to Old Augusta, I mean, the roads are gonna be traveled with the trucks, so.
Gotcha, you'll get a chance to talk more about it, man.
The other thing, it, it's not like, you know, everybody pays a fuel tax to utilize, and we get, that goes to the state, but some of that comes back to us. It's actually higher on these dump trucks and trucks through diesel fuel.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I, I understand everybody hates all these big vehicles, but they have the right to use these roads. They pay a tax, just like everybody that drives a pickup truck. Um, now, how we can maybe gain more, I don't know, but if they're paying a sales tax, then we are gaining something from it, but,
and.
But it's, it still ties back, somebody's got a piece of property they wanna utilize. They wanna dig dirt, they wanna build houses, they wanna cut timber, grow cotton, whatever. They wanna do something to that property.
And they wanna get close to the Effingham Parkway, so they don't haul the dirt to Effingham Parkway, somebody's got to haul it to build them fucking six bridges we got going through the swamp.
We just did a G dot one right there.
We, we got that close proximity, so they wouldn't be traveling all over our county roads.
Yeah, I, I see.
And that's one reason we approved that, so they could take it right from there to the Parkway and not damage our roads. Okay, well, I just wanna get some general discussion, not really make a decision, but I'm gonna open a public hearing and we'll listen to those who are speaking in favor of this rezoning to start with. And that might be yourself, who, who's speaking in favor of this rezoning request tonight? Would you like to speak? Anyone speaking in favor of this rezoning request, now's the time to, to share with the board why you're requesting and why the, uh, planning board, the planning board approved, right, but the staff has recommended denial?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Hey.
Hey.
Jason Ron.
Hey, Jason.
Um, I would speak on behalf of approving it, um, some of what y'all were just saying about the, uh, truck routes and stuff. Um, it's locate, it'll be located as close to Parkway as you can get. Parkway's looking for somewhere, the last time I spoke with, uh, what's the name of them that's building Parkway?
Balfour Beatty.
Balfour Beatty, they looking for an additional two hundred thousand load, uh, yards of dirt. Um, it's gotta come from somewhere, they're gonna build it somewhere. I can either price it from Stillwell Road and haul it all the way across the county, or we can haul it right down the road, either way, it don't matter to me. But to go back to the fact of whether or not you're making money, the county making money off of it, you're putting us in the highest tax bracket, so we're gonna pay industrial tax for as long as we digging dirt. Not residential, we pay in the highest tax bracket you can get. We are paying sales tax. I did a rough calculation, you're gonna get a little bit over, uh, three million dollars off of that one pit. I know that ain't much in the big scheme of things.
O- over how many years is that, Jason? Do you know?
I don't know on years, because I'm gonna tell you, we was asked here in the planning board, everybody wants to know a timeframe. I'm not gonna stand up here and lie and tell you it's gonna be two years, five years, or what it's gonna be.
When the pit, when the pit's used to its maximum, you're saying that there'd be three million dollars in sales tax, you believe?
Correct.
Okay.
Estimated. That's just on sales tax. That's not including the fact of, um, um, people seem to forget, every project needs dirt. It's not a if, you do. You need dirt on every project, whether you're building a house, whether you're building a warehouse, whether you're building a rec department down here, a hotel, it don't matter what it is, dump trucks is involved. I understand your concern about the road, but I also understand that it's from where Blue Jay ends the Parkway right there. Where, where's the trucks gonna go from there? When they come down that Parkway, where are they gonna go? That's not the end destination of the truck, is to come down that Parkway and just stop. Where do, where do you want him to go?
Note, answer that question, they cannot use McCall Road right now, they've gotta use twenty-one or one nineteen, if they're coming.
I'm talking about the Parkway.
I know, if they're coming down the Parkway, they're gonna have to get off and access the truck routes that'll be there, the east-west corridor and so forth. They, they cannot come on down McCall until that road is approved as a truck route road. If they're coming south from up north, they can't access the Parkway without accessing it through the gateway or some such a nature. Most of that Parkway is for the trucks coming from the industrial sites that are already there.
There's already industrial sites on the Parkway?
Yes, you got the, um.
The Parkway's not built?
Well, there's industrial sites already there, and the Parkway's being built through the middle of it, that's the, um, uh, OmniTrax property and so forth. And we're making all those industrial properties access only the Parkway.
So, how do they get dirt, where do they get dirt from, the thirty-one pits you talking about? Once you register a pit in the state of Georgia, it's, it's there, it's open. There's not thirty-one open pits in Effingham County.
How many are there?
I don't know, but it ain't thirty-one. And what warrants a pit is only the size of it, it can be a pond. It can be, it can be ten acres and has the state of Georgia recognizes it, it's a pit. If it's over, what, two acres, isn't that correct?
One acre, you can buy, you, you can build one acre without any of this regulations.
So, if you go over one acre, it's a dirt pit. I guarantee you there's more than thirty-one in Effingham County.
One of Little McCall, is that not accessible?
The which one?
One of Little McCall. It shows one of Little McCall, I don't know. And if you're familiar with that one.
There's one of Little McCall at Courthouse in, uh, Little McCall.
Is that usable?
I don't know how much is left in that one.
It's not open to the public, it's a private pit.
Only prove it. Two or three years ago, that'd been long ago. So, it can't be nearly used up.
And that's the same distance.
From this pit site, how far is it to twenty-one, or what's your closest state route? Or what's the clo- what's the distance gonna be to the Parkway, where to build them, where to build the Parkway?
I don't know what the distance is off the top of my head, I don't know. But the closest route, I mean, whenever you talking about that, coming from the dirt pits, we've had this discussion on other pits that we had. If the job is left, do you have to go right? Because this is a mile closer than this state right, route.
Well, that's, that's my concern, though, once you approve a per- a pit that's on like, say, McCall Road, will they use Ralphron Road to get twenty-one, and all those constituents come in and those, that road gets torn apart? Cause it's not a truck route, you know?
Correct.
So, there's just, I, I see the issues that we create on our roads when we, when we allow an industrial site in the middle of an area that's not truck route roads, there's a lot of ways they can go. If it's on twenty-one, for example, or one nineteen, you'd have to go down to a truck route, or the shortest route that, you know, not say the shortest route, but a, a direct route without jeopardizing the truck route.
Without, without backing up, more or less.
Right, yeah.
So, what you were saying earlier, you would, you would think that we need to have our dirt pits on either Highway twenty-one, one nineteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Or a truck route road, and we're working on some.
Or Old Augusta Road.
We're looking to, trying to build our roads to a truck route standard so that they don't get torn up, you know?
I mean, if you don't know about this one, then how, I mean, how do you know you can't get dirt already? I mean, do you, have you investigated and you can't find dirt anywhere, and that's why you wanna do this? Or you just wanna do this because you wanna use the dirt for your business? I mean, I'm trying to get the re- the why behind doing this now, and maybe they're not thirty-one permitted, they're op- operable, but we'll find out how many there actually are, but have you done your due diligence looking for dirt? I mean, is there other ways to get dirt, or is this something you gotta do in order to, to get dirt?
You meaning me go buy dirt from a competitor's pit to be able to deliver, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, is there dirt accessible? I mean, is. That's fair question.
Some I can't have tonight. Trucking company versus using your own equipment, Doug.
I do that.
And we often buy dirt as well, from other pits, we do.
That's what I'm asking, I mean, is it, is there, is there a dire need here? That we're out of dirt, or we can't be competitive, or, you know, what's the why here? I know there's more money in it for you to have your own pit, there's no question on that. But what, beyond that, where, what's the need?
I don't, I don't have a answer for that, that's.
Is this your property, or you?
It's my property.
Okay.
It's my personal property.
The thing about a, a dirt pi- a pit like that, it'd be a bunch of trucks on it, but after he gets it dug out, you won't have all them trucks and you can't build nothing else on it, so.
Well, that's kinda where the discussion was, I thought, with the warehouses and trucks, they're gonna, it's gonna be a continuous thing versus this pit, once he's done, he's done.
He's done, if he does it in two years.
Would it go on for fifteen, twenty years, say, say?
Well, he can kinda calculate how many loads is gonna come out of there, and tell you how many, how long, or maybe how many runs it's gonna be.
Asked him that, but he, he didn't wanna give a date on how long it would take.
Don't wanna give a date.
It's just like that one we had on Pine Street.
Yeah.
We, we gave him a deadline, well, the economy crashed, he never got to dig it out, but we made him shut his pit down, it cost him money.
He, here's the.
It hurt him personally.
If McCall Road becomes a, uh, part of the Parkway down the road, then it's gonna be a limited access road. And if that pit, or any other pits that's on that road are still going, you're gonna have trucks accessing a, a rapidly moving traffic road, you know, which we're trying to have limited access on those roads now.
And I see your point, but I can't go in an AR one and start a trucking company.
Everything was AR one, every house out here was woods.
It'd be a lot cheaper.
Every one point, people's developing stuff every day, and it's been going on for years. At some point, this lands will change hands.
I wanna make one point, just, um, my thoughts. I, I understand, you know, we have the, uh, truck routes that, and they're, are, the Effingham Parkway, and it's gonna access some industrial parcels where we've, we've identified is appropriate for industrial. Is it a good use to, of that property to be a pit that becomes, when it's dug out, is not fully used? You see what I'm saying? Or is that, or is that industrial property that's planned in a proper place to be industrial, to be something that will be there perpetually as industrial benefiting all taxpayers? Is that making some sense?
Yeah.
Um, I, I get it, but I, that really just.
We still have this issue.
Really hit me.
Still have.
I think your daddy, I think your daddy was the first zoning man in Effingham County.
We still have that issue that we've talked about.
That was a long time ago, where I was born.
We still have the issue we've talked about, that I, I tried to get the commission to do something on where it wasn't rezoned to I property. Because you do have that issue that people have I property and it opens up a can of worms, we talked about AR with a conditional use, and we never did do that.
It does have to revert back to AR one, when this is done, he can close the pit, it's supposed to go back to AR one, then you can build houses around it and build, just like Cypress Lakes over on Old River Road.
It will go back to AR one, that's.
Those are beautiful, that's a beautiful neighborhood over there.
You won't have no, you won't have any, uh, big buildings on it, though, you know?
No, it's just a bunch of big old houses.
I mean, no more big trucks hauling nothing out of there, I mean, it'd be over there.
Okay.
I, I get, I get everybody's point, I just, I don't like seeing somebody's restricted if it's a, a, a good use of the property.
Even the residential houses that's there, how did they get their dirt?
Those are even for all our stuff.
Yeah, because a warehouse could be a good use for property for revenue generating, but it's not good use for the residents in that area.
Again, but then it looks like all we want is money, I mean, this man's just trying to utilize his property.
True, but, yeah, same point as before, I can't use property that I own for industrial use, cause that'd be.
I mean, we've been selling dirt for twenty years.
You do a good job with the pits, I, I g- I agree with that.
You know, I mean, check our track record.
We, we have, and we, we look at what the pits you've done, it's not that, so it has nothing to do with you, and mine goes back to what we've been talking about, I just, I know we spend a lot of money on roads.
But I know that we haul a bunch of dirt from this end to this end. You know, what's gonna save your roads, get the trucks closer to that end, that's where everything's going on. If you're wondering how many warehouses and how many thousands of loads of dirt are being built in Clau, I can get that information for you, cause it's none.
Yeah.
You wanna know how many's in Killdeer?
We agree with all that.
It's none, it's that way. So, we're trying to move our fleet of trucks from where we're at, they're traveling these roads anyway, and get them closer that way, cause that's where everything's at.
Okay.
And I understand that, that people's upset about it being in their neighborhood. This neighborhood was built, these neighborhoods was built in the middle of a rural area. And guess what? I cleared the lots on most of these, these people that's complaining, prior to them buying the house, we cleared the lots, we hauled the dirt, we done the work, where do you think the dirt come from? It can't come from, it can't come from the upper end of the county. But we can discuss, Will?
I appreciate it, is anyone else tonight speaking in favor before I open to see who's speaking and maybe against this rezoning? I wanted the discussion from the board, so I could get an idea of the, the temperament of the board and, as well as, uh, gives the constituents an opportunity to hear, yes, sir?
I'd like to, uh, speak in favor, my name's Austin King.
Okay.
This isn't just a pit for Jason Ron and the McGrady Company, McGrady Company's a family, it's a business within the county and it employs over a hundred people, it feeds three hundred people's mouths every day. So, this isn't just a pit for, um, them to feed their mouths, they feed all of us too. And where do you think we get our raises from, where we can make more money? It's not from hauling dirt way up the road, it's getting it closer to the job site to save them money, where they can get. It's not from hauling dirt way up the road. It's getting it closer to the job site to save them money where they can give to us and our families.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Anyone else speaking in favor of this, uh, rezoning tonight?
Good evening. My name's Jim Willis. Work with the McGrady Company. I'm a little anomaly because I come from Savannah every day and spend money right here in Effingham County and work in this county. Yes, sir. And I've loved it. I've only been here for about five, four or five weeks. Whenever the Ron's bought the property. Tonight, you will probably hear from our opposition saying that we've been out there digging holes and running machinery. I'll attest to you this evening that I've been there every day that we've been operating. We haven't dug any holes. We've had code enforcement come out there. So I like to squash that before that comes up. Also, um, if you look at a map, we're talking about, um, a lot of truck traffic. I hear that over and over again. What we haven't taught about at Effingham County is very unique with is railroads. Railroad traffic is coming right there too. So sooner or later, hate to say it, I think it's going to be zoned industrial, you know, somewhere along the lines. And I know there's a lot of opposition there, but, um, as Echo and my colleague Austin, this is feeding my family too. And I really appreciate your time this evening and any consideration. Thank you.
Just, um, my comment from the chairman, I'm not for any more industrial land right now in Effingham County, so I don't see it becoming industrial. We've got six thousand acres we need to see developed before we look at, uh, approving additional, industrial sites. Uh, anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this, uh, rezoning request that'd like to let the board hear? If you come one at a time and if you keep your comments to two or three minutes, that'll help. Um, I know they had three and they had more time, but it might be twenty of you. So it will be a long time if you can't get short.
I won't be very long. Um, I currently live on Ralph Ron Road. I travel McCall Road every day for work. My daughter travels McCall over everywhere.
Did he give his name yet?
I'm sorry. My name is Keith Albert.
Keith Albert, okay.
Um, my daughter travels that road every day going back and forth to school. Anybody who leaves the county knows we already have issues getting out as it is. So when we add dump trucks to it, it's gonna make it that much worse. I didn't move from Savannah to Effingham to have to deal with this kinda stuff at all.
They're entitled to, so you feel like.
They're entitled. I, I understand.
They pay taxes. They can utilize these. That's what I'm saying. People move up here.
But they're gonna drive down a road that is not a truck road.
But there's growing, there's growing pains in Effingham now. That's the reason.
Okay, but they don't need to be over in our area. They don't need to be in our area. Okay? The other thing, when we left the meeting last, the meeting that we originally held, this was approved. The day after, I received a message from one of the employees of the company telling me how upset they were that the people who come up here and had to speak about what they didn't like about it, didn't bother to look into the company. I don't need to look into the company. I don't need to look into what they do. I don't need to look into the family.
That's not pertinent to, to your.
I'm up here because I don't want it there. I have a daughter that travels that road, a wife and myself.
Your concern is the traffic.
The traffic is gonna be too much traffic. There's no way. We've already got stuff going down race path causing issues.
Alright, let's hear from somebody else. Anyone else tonight speaking in opposition? If you, if it's traffic's your concern, you can say, "Traffic's my concern" and, and give something additional. We just wanna hear the, the different oppositions.
My name's Charles Haslip. My property butts right up next to this project. And not only the traffic, but like the wells. My house is on a well system. Now, I brought that up and it was told that this normally doesn't disrupt, you know, the water table or whatever. But looking into it after that last meeting, whenever, uh, wells have been disturbed or poisoned, I guess, if you will, you know, taking legal action against somebody is very difficult because you have to prove who messed up your water system. And this is right next to my house. If, so if somehow they disrupt my well, there's no way I'm, I'm gonna be able to prove they did it, you know, um, you know, I understand.
I'm not saying this because, you know, I, I don't, I'm not really for these types of things. So I'm not just trying to sheet that down. But you're probably into the aquifer, which is two, three hundred feet below the surface. This mine's gonna be, I don't know, twelve feet deep or something. It's not gonna affect the aquifer. You shouldn't have any issue with your well.
It should. I should.
You couldn't. Unless it's runoff and that's controlled by Georgia Soil and Water. They have to do.
Is that guaranteed?
That side will be protected and, and, and it's not gonna get to the aquifer. They're not digging that deep, so.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, looking into it and nobody guarantees anything. You just say it's not gonna happen. But when it does, you know, the legal ramifications are just astronomical, you know, cause, you know, first thing is, is prove we did that.
Do you have anything else that you wanna add to the traffic and your concern about your well?
Um, yeah, there was, but you kinda distracted me there, but, um.
Think about it. Let you come back up. Let's see who else is speaking. Think about it. You may, let's come back up. Anyone else tonight speaking with something different than what we've already heard?
Hi, I'm Chris Reed. I live, uh, in Buckfield neighborhood, just north of.
What's the neighborhood, Chris?
It's, uh, Buckfield, just north of that location. The only thing that I had was if it's approved, is there a way to limit the operating hours and days of the week? Um, so that we're not having, hearing in the middle of night and on Sundays and everything else when you're trying to relax and sleep. Um, I had the same traffic stuff. Um, the other thing was, you know, the next time St. McCall or Ron Station's repaved, can we get that road widened each of the drive lanes by six to eight inches? So that as the trucks are going down the road, they're not hitting those rumble strips on the sides as much. Um, and then, you know, will there be a, a road or infrastructure impact fee charged to the operator or the landowner for that, for that parcel?
It's a good question. It'd probably be something that's more county-wide. We probably couldn't just charge one if we did that.
Right.
That might answer some of my concerns about the roads, but Ron Station Road is one of my concerns is we're accessing that road with a lot of tonnage.
And, and Ralph Ron is, is not built up for that also.
Ralph Ron as well.
Thank you.
You thought of the other item? He's got one quick item. What is it?
Yeah, just, it was the, the length of how long that they're gonna be digging into this, you know, since my property is right next to it. You know, and, uh, just really that, you know, the length of it and, you know, how long I have to deal with that.
Mr. Jason, do you have a estimate of how long that might be? I know, I know you just got the number of tonnage that you can take out of it, but.
I can't give you that until we, um, get it to an industrial and we get a permit.
Okay.
We can't sell something when you got.
I know some of these, some of these pits have been around ten, fifteen, twenty years, so it could be a while. I don't know how long that one be.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Randy Ward. I live on Buckfield Lane. I'm entirely against this. I, um, I moved here from the south side of Savannah because it was a lot of noise. I suffer from combat PTSD and Brinkin was like a, a Rockwell, Norman Rockwell place. My wife, we, we sat out and we lis- we watched the deer, listened to the owls. You know, no, a normal, uh, Norman Rockwell thing.
How long have you lived here?
I, I bought my house, I, I actually, I was in, um, um, I was in, in Iraq. And if you ever tried to close on a house while you're in Iraq in two thousand and ten, it's very difficult.
Well, I've lived here since two thousand, I mean, nineteen seventy-six or seven, eight, somewhere near. So I've seen all the changes and then some that you have seen.
Yeah.
We, we, we're growing. It's gonna change.
Oh, we're, we're grown. But look, look, yeah, look at the picture here. Look at all these neighborhoods.
Not gonna be.
Do we really need industrial sites in the middle of these neighborhoods?
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not technically an industrial site except for this per- this, this land. I'm not speaking for.
Who planned for a mine in the middle of all these neighborhoods? It's terrible. Now, you're, you're, you're saying we're gonna eventually make, uh, uh, the road out there a, uh, a truck route. Well, have y'all looked at how many school buses run up and down that pla- down that road on McCall? A lot of them.
Yeah, we, we've got traffic studies that we're doing and, and pay a lot of money to, to help us.
But now we're telling these bus drivers, okay, watch out for the bigger trucks now.
Gotcha. Appreciate it.
Okay, and the noise is terrible. I don't know what they're doing out there, but I, I, I wear a hearing plug, uh, hearing aids.
How far is your, your?
Uh, if we go right straight through the woods, it's about a mile.
About a mile. Um, I live within a, probably three quarters of a mile of the one that's on Courthouse. And not disputing what you're saying, you're saying for me, I never hear it.
I hear it.
So I'm not against them from that standpoint. I'm, I'm.
Well, I gotta go in and take my hea- hea- hearing aids out and I can still hear them.
I never hear mine. I'm three quarters of a mile away from it. There's no trees to block it.
Well.
Chairman, I don't think they're, it's not operating as a dirt mine. They're doing something different.
Well, I, I don't know what they're doing.
Is what I took earlier when they spoke.
Right. Well, it started October twelfth.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I appreciate y'all not doing this.
Alright, any other, anyone speaking in opposition? Looking for, you can say ditto the other and I have additional, additional comments.
I'm Terry Finney. I live in Buckfield also. Um, yeah, ditto on the noise. Uh, but also, um, there is a lot of noise going on there. And this morning, there was a lot of noise going on around there. So there is something going on whether they're mining or they're cleaning or whatever. There's a lot of noise. And if that's the noise we hear now, it will grow and increase. Um, also the traffic. And if you look at Ralph Ron, there's already dirt marks down the road where some big trucks are going through and leaving dirt through the main road. So there's some big traffic on there. Thank you.
We'll have two or three more, then we'll close the public hearing.
Bernadette O'Connor, I live on Ralph Road, less than a half a mile from that lovely proposed. Um, I am definitely, um, opposed against it. Uh, my question to the board is, why do you have zones? Why is there zoning? We moved from lost plantation to the beautiful area of Effingham County because it was residential slash agricultural. I don't understand why you have zones. If you're, if somebody's just gonna come in and say, oh, you know what? I like that piece of property. How about we just rezone that so that I can make however much money, millions of dollars off of all that land? I don't care what he does afterwards because y'all are saying that it's just gonna wind up going back to residential. But my point exactly, and I wanted to applaud you, sir, when you said, asked that gentleman, you know, he's real quick on that three million dollars for the county, real quick on that. But he, oh, I have no idea how long it's gonna take me to dig that out. And you know what? While you all are sitting here just listening to the last person right behind me, he said, I wouldn't care if it, strike me dead, Lord. I wouldn't care if it took me thirty years, is what I heard, sitting in that seat.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're not gonna get personal.
Okay, well, okay.
I know this person well and that's not gonna.
Okay, okay.
My conflict with this is not, nothing, everything they've done in the county with their mining and trucking has been excellent, probably better than most who do it. So he has a high character rating among this board. My position is strictly the discussion about the roads and the damage and so forth and, and.
Right, I ditto the roads.
In my discussion to your point, again, is I've, I've talked to the board about looking at making these things, uh, I have struggled, even though it's conditional for a while, you know, it's an eyes zoning goes back, it still creates an issue for our constituents that they, they have eyes zoning in the middle of.
Wish we could come up with a different zoning because soon as, it's just for a pit. It's just digging, it's just a pond.
And that's what we need to look at. It's not making it an eye zoning.
Anything but a.
That's a good point and we've looked at that and I'm, I'm in favor of getting rid of this eye zoning for these pits in the middle of a.
Right, I mean, I just, it just makes no sense to me. I mean, I built, I mean, we moved to the agricultural industry. I mean, agricultural residential, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, one or, one or two more and we're gonna close the, uh, public hearing. Looking for new comments and new concerns?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Meeks-McKiver and I wouldn't say an ugly word about that man back there because I know he's a good fella and he's got a very good business. But I would like to speak to the fact, I live on Ron Station Road. This is very close to my property. I would like to speak from a voice of experience from where I used to live at on the other end of the county in Eden. And I lived on Pine Street and they allowed a twelve-year mining there. Said the same thing, unfortunately, oh, it was gonna be a lake recreation for people. There's nothing there but a hole. Nothing filled in. There's no lake. It did affect the water table of the wells of the people around there. I know for a fact that did happen.
Groundwater tables, but I, you could cut me from wrong step, but it cannot affect the aquifer.
No, I, I know that.
For your waterfront.
Right, but, but it, it, it can have some effect on the shifting of the, the earth in that area. And when we lived there, literally I timed it sometimes, within a minute, I would have three dump trucks go past my house. And, and right now, I'm, I'm very concerned about our whole, I, I moved to this other end of the county thinking I was coming and, and getting to a better area. And unfortunately, I see more and more industrial coming. I feel like we're getting ready to be the next Port Wentworth where we're gonna look out one day and it's gonna be anything but warehouses and.
Well, that's not gonna happen. This board has really taken some huge steps.
Well, I, I hope so because I'm a, I'm a tenth generation, um, Salzburger. And my, the property I live on belonged to my great, 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 great grands and they, they're ones that settled there.
This land used plan, not to catch off it, that we're looking at is trying to keep industrial in the areas that, i- if you really look at what this board has done, there's only been like two additional, maybe three small tracks have been added to the industrial property that was already planned and designed long before most of these people were ever on the board.
Right.
So, and we've only done those where we made them, you're gonna go to the parkway, you're not gonna go to Hodgeville, for example. Or it's on Old Augusta where if you go back and look at the previous board, they had built that road to a truck route standard thinking that below Chimney Road would be industrial. I'm just sharing some, that, that we are not looking to make this a Port Wentworth warehousing area. Um, I've even exposed this board, I think most of them on the kind of same page, north of Chimney Road. We need to look at not in, increasing the warehousing that we can control in that area. So we're not gonna be that and we're trying to do equality on our zoning. So even our density and multifamily is gonna be more quality in the right areas. So we, we are really looking to still keep that community feel that, that I grew up with when I moved here in seventy-eight or whenever it was.
That's, that's what I moved here for. I came out of Savannah to come up here to, to have my animals and live on a farm. And I mean, already concerned that we have that large truck stop at the end of Ron Station Road and I, I mean.
That's on twenty-one, that's where it should be, not, not on a.
But I just, I'm just afraid that cut through is gonna come right down Ron Station to go get gas.
Concern as well. That's why I'm always concerned about trucks being put on non-truck route roads and non-state highways.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. I'll take one more and then we're gonna close the public hearing.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Michael O'Connor. I started the Facebook page Decline the Mine. I know that there are almost two hundred people who are on that page who are against this and, and they're, they're frightened. They're frightened that the, the communities we live in are gonna be ruined. They're frightened that our peace and quiet is gonna be disturbed. I, I, I wrote a statement, if you don't mind, I'd like to read it.
Is it a couple of minutes or you can give a copy to us?
It's a couple of minutes.
Alright, two minutes and I'll, and I'm gonna cut it off.
The mission statement of the Board of Commissioners. It is the mission of the Effingham County Board of Commissioners to provide through the highest integrity a county government which will assure our citizens a safe and healthy environment to encourage and promote a high quality of life. With that said, I don't think you're doing that. For you to rush us.
I disagree that we are doing that.
I, 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 I can appreciate that, but if you don't mind, I'd like to finish.
Well, I want you, I want it to be related to this mine and not to this board.
Okay.
Cause that's, the public hearing's about this rezoning, not the actions of the board.
Well, it's not an attack. For Mr. Floyd to sit there and snicker.
We're not gonna go there either.
Why did, if it's so bad, why does all these people move to Effingham County? Everybody's up here. When I moved here, everybody's moved here. There must be something going on pretty good up here.
But do you have a dirt pit in your backyard?
You don't know where I live.
I'll tell you what.
I'm asking, do you?
I'm gonna bring that to a close.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna know what your opposition is to.
Please, please let me finish this.
I'll, I'll let you finish. You talk about your opposition.
Thank you. We, the constituents of Effingham County, implore the commissioners to disapprove this rezoning request. The proposed surface mine does not belong in our residential community, as I'm sure you would agree if it were in your community. I will cre- it will create a dangerous scenario for our children exiting and entering school buses and increased risk for our teenagers traversing local roads to Savannah, Tech, Effingham College and Career Academy, as well as our local high schools. This is a risk we feel is unnecessary and not worth taking. It will introduce additional truck traffic on our roads that are not designated truck routes and are already in deplorable condition. The noise from the construction area is already at times unbearable. Even through the McGrady Company, even though the McGrady Company denies beginning construction and claims it's only cleanup work. Almost done. During the last meeting, the zoning department manager, Katie Donegan, who has been very helpful, clearly stated it was the opinion of her and her department of experts that this rezoning request be denied. Her recommendation. Our multiple pleas to the planning commission fell on deaf ears. A large portion of the constituents in your county feel that there is no way to change the already decided vote due to existing business relationships in play. due to existing business relationships in place. And the Good Old Boy Network.
All right, that's enough.
Please prove us wrong.
That's enough.
Please prove us wrong with your votes. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, yeah. Well, I can tell you, if this board votes to approve it, it won't be because of Good Old Boy, it'll be because they're doing what's best for this county. This is an excellent board.
As far as traffic's concerned, you leave Rankin in the morning, go into Savannah at six-thirty in the morning, and this lobby takes you an hour and a half to get downtown Savannah. And that happens every morning and every afternoon. I know that for a fact. So, the traffic, sure, the traffic has overtaken Effingham County. We, we about five or ten years behind on the roads for the traffic that's coming into Effingham County. But we can't help that, we can't stop it right now.
But we're working on it.
Sir, may I ask one more thing?
We close the public hearing, okay? We, we've gotta move on, we've been on this almost an hour. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, is my recommendation. I have concerns, I look at all these green marks of, of pits. First is the need, and it's not the priority, but I'm looking at the, do we need, because we are using land in the county for something that may not be the best use, and I understand we don't wanna restrict a taxpayer from, or property owner from using their property. But there again, to your point, we cannot go into a, AR-one and have a, a trucking business or a warehouse.
Be a lot cheaper, but can't do it.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of uses for land that it's good for the property owner. Um, so the zoning I have a concern with. I have a concern with the, the cost of the trucks on the highway, a- and I almost would like, if the board's gonna vote on this and approve or disapprove, have a little more information. I would like to know what these revenues are, what the impact predicted on our roads. Like we do the loci reports when industry comes in. I mean, when we had three or four, that's one thing. We've got sixty or whatever, you know, what's it gonna be the impact on, on Ralph Run Road? What's gonna be the impact on Ron Station Road? Uh, do we have a need for the dirt, for the development, uh, in our county? I mean, there's some questions.
I think so. They need a bunch of dirt on, on the expressway, and it's gotta come from somewhere.
Well, I, instead of just assuming, I'd like to hear the staff do some research, and, and the staff is recommending denying because it's not, they've heard us talk about truck routes and state highways. And, uh, so I, I, I'd like some, I'd, I'd like to see you table it, get some more information on the cost, the, of the, like a loci, this is the revenue it's gonna generate, but this is gonna be the cost to our roads, this is gonna be the trucks, gonna be on the highway. How many pits are two-thirds done, or one-third done, or, I mean, if we have a real need, then I might change my opinion, because we, we do have to put pits strategically where development's going. But it leaves this board to, to plan that, so we do the least amount of damage, and I don't know that I have the information to recommend to this board a motion to approve or deny, but I, right now, I'd recommend to deny it if we're gonna be forward with the vote. And, and I know Jason has a great job with his construction, his development, and all he does, so.
Well, I think, I think they need to, I think they need the dirt to start with, and traffic is here, I mean, uh, the traffic's here to stay, it's not even gonna get worse all the time. In far as the roads, the roads don't get tore up? Well, they, we have, we have to, we have to fix them, so, I'm not, uh, and it don't matter how many other mines is in Effingham County. It doesn't matter about how many others got it. They might have two hundred in the county, but he's not concerned with the other two hundred, uh, dirt pits in, uh.
But we should be.
But we should be.
Just like, just like.
We should be very concerned with that.
Ms. Reg, just like we, we're concerned about how many warehousing, you know.
I don't wanna put a million warehouses.
This person wants a warehouse on their property, and we, but we're concerned about the number of warehousing. So, the number of pits does become a, um, something for us to consider.
But you gotta get dirt from somewhere.
Well, if we can already get dirt from somewhere.
What was your suggestion, though? Was it to find out exactly what operating pits we do have? Is that what you're saying?
I would like to get information on the operating pits we have, you know, what, what's the.
Distance to the Parkway. I mean, if you, if you.
Distance to the Parkway.
If you can get one right off Midland, and that looks about the same distance, and I'm just looking at it.
So, is it a real need?
We don't know how big it is, we don't know what the capacity is. That's the thing that we could probably find out.
Exactly. We need that kind of, I'm, I'm talking, we have enough data to really say.
Is it a real need for this? If it's a need, then I, I might back off, or right now, I don't wanna see the cost to our roads unless I know there's a real legitimate need for additional.
There's a need.
There, you saying table? What are you?
I would table it and let the staff, see if they can do some research on that for us.
I can tell you this, wh- one thing that you mentioned we're gonna, we're not gonna be able to do is, um, is calculate out the, the sales tax. Um, and, uh, it's because, while we can find out how much property tax, um, an entity pays, um, DOR will not tell you, um, what particular entities pay in sales tax annually. Um, they'll give you categories, um, but I think, um.
Well, Mr. Ron has come up with a number that he believes over the period of this pit will generate. And he's probably done that because you can take the square foot of the pit that you're gonna ask to be permitted, you know how deep you're gonna go, you can get a square foot, you can get per tonnage, and you know what you're gonna sell it for roughly. I mean, if, there is a, there's a number out there that we can come up with that's real.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I, I'd have to, I mean, so, understand that, we, we'd have to kinda come up with a, um, uh.
I gotta believe that number is out there in a chart that they say if you do one acre at twelve-foot deep, this is the tonnage you'll get off of that, and you multiply it times the price you're gonna sell it for. I can't believe that's that hard to come up with.
No, that's something, I mean, if, if, if we kind of came up with a, um, how much, uh, how many loads each facility did and just averaged them out in a given year, um, based what the current, uh, price per yard is per, uh, per soil, or load of, uh, per soil, uh, we could probably come up with something, um, to, uh, that, that would have a very large margin of error, but it would give you an idea on sales tax.
Yeah, it could be a margin error.
How was it gonna take to get all this information?
I don't know, but I just, I'm just, I'm just not for being on, not on a state highway or a, uh, truck route without showing a need.
Well, I don't, I don't think you don't get that.
Without showing some kind of need.
It's not so much the money, it's, it's need versus impact.
The need.
If the, if the need is there, and everybody's gotta share that impact, that's one thing, but if the need's not there, why will we impact these people? That's my point. If, if, if we're not, let's, I didn't applause, but thank you, but.
I can enter, I can. Impact it how?
Impact their daily lives. Every day, they'll have to deal with that. Every day, we'll have to deal with these roads, every day, we're gonna have to fix these roads. Uh, there's two of them proposing, I, one's on horsepin, and it's just been paid.
Five hundred houses back there, what's that impact gonna be?
I don't know, but I mean, if there's another alternative, why would you create another one? I mean, if we got, if I'm right.
All it is is a dirt pit, I remember.
That's not, that's not true. It's not his to do, I can't build it anyway.
It's his property.
So he can go build a nuclear plant, and his property.
No, he can come before us and ask permission to do this, build a pond.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna do.
That's our job.
Y'all be just shut up. I'm gonna make a motion.
Dig a big old lake and build houses around it, maybe continue.
I'm gonna make a motion, okay, we're planning board.
Hang on a second, we, I got a motion, I'm gonna hear it. What's the motion?
I'm gonna make a motion, planning board recommendations. If our people on that board decide to do that, y'all can second it, or you can turn it down, but I'm gonna make a motion, planning board recommendations. But we do need to get some times.
I have a motion on Mr. Loper to approve the rezoning according to the planning board recommendations.
And, and times, I'll say somewhere at nine-thirty, I don't think he's, but we need, we need, we need to check all that.
I think there is an operating time for these mines, it's.
But I read it's nine-thirty somewhere.
I'll ask, is there an expiration date in the.
I, I know on other, hang on a second, let's talk one at a time, one at a time.
We need some more information.
I, I know that we have had some, uh, time periods on other mines. Can you help us with that information?
Yeah, so, it's, it's per county, I'm Elick Mesker, EMC Engineering, so I think it's in the ordinance about ponds. So I think it's eight to five, Monday through Friday.
I was, I was thinking it was normal business hours.
Excuse me, excuse me. Eight to nine? Eight to five AM is in the pond section, and it appears to be limited to ponds dug for the intention to be ponds, and is limited to six months' worth of digging. Um, if you look under excavation, it says sunrise to sunset, but state permitting mining operations are exempt from this. So, uh, and neither the building ordinance for noise, nor the general noise ordinance, I think fully cover it. So what staff needs to do is find out if there is a state regulation on hours, unless the board would like to recommend hours of operation.
So, Ms. Reg, you're trying to move this along. If, if you're making a motion continually and looking for a second, and you want a time period, you would need to put that condition on there, because it doesn't sound like it's, it's guided by ordinances, and we don't know if the state puts a time. So you'd have to put a time, operating hours from eight to five, if you wanna make a motion and keep on going, or we could table it and get more information.
And I have no problem if we wanted to, just to consider the concerns of traffic, uh, the need, I mean, that's, I, I, I'm kinda torn on that, because, uh, it's kind of a free market thing to me, so, um, if there's a, if there's not a need, there's not gonna be a, a mining operation. But I, you know, I can entertain just the concerns you have of looking at the roads. Um, I'm familiar with one of their pit, as far as the operations on their site, there's, they do a great job. So, I, that, I don't have a large concern there, um, but I don't have a problem looking, can considering the transportation questions that y'all have. Um, if you'll entertain, I mean, that's up for consideration.
Yeah, I think we need to look into it, getting times and hours and all this kinda stuff, and noise and all this kinda stuff, we need to check into that.
Well, do you wanna make a motion then to table, to look at the times and some conditions, if you wanna hope to get it approved? Or do you wanna go ahead and do a motion to approve?
Well, I probably know, I'm probably not gonna get it passed, so, yeah, I'll do that. I, but a time limit.
And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, but, I'm.
I just, we need to move this along, if you need more information, let's get more information. So, are you making a motion to table to get appropriate conditions and more information on road cost?
Yes.
Okay, so motion by.
And I want a time limit, I don't want it three months from now.
Right, well, they should be able to do that, hopefully the next, by the next meeting?
I, I think we can do it by the next meeting.
I would, I would say two weeks.
All right.
Okay, two weeks.
So, we, motion is to table it to the next meeting, which is the fifteenth, and we'll see if we can get a second and second, but, uh, eleven fifteen twenty-two for staff to come up with the, uh, estimated, uh, road cost and.
And I'd like to look at this map, 'cause I'm not sure, I, I understand, you know, some of these are technically, I, I don't think they're operating, or they're, they're, they just haven't, maybe haven't gone through the process.
Well, clarity for our staff, the motion is to have time next few weeks to come up with some idea of, um, I guess, what this does to our roads.
Okay.
As you can. Secondly, is, um, a time, conditions that will make it more, uh, that will listen to our constituents and help them. I, I know one, one, uh, pit, there's a berm, well, matter of fact, the one on Courthouse, um, that's half, three-quarters mile from my house. They had to put a twelve-foot berm around it to keep the noise, maybe that's why I don't hear it, I don't know. Um, but look at the conditions that the board might can consider, um, look at the time of operation. And, uh, I don't know if there's a, a length of time you can put on a, a pit, that's one of the concerns I have with constituents, how long is it gonna be? Can we put a, a time period? I don't know legally, Lee, if you can say that or not, but you might get with Lee about that. Can you put a ten-year limit so they'd have to come back for renewal? I don't know. What can we do to protect the character of our neighborhoods? Limit the traffic, limit the cost to our roads.
Okay.
More information, if you can do those things for us. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, devil, second to table it.
Second, sorry.
All right, second by Mr. Floyd. All right.
Oh, we're also gonna have data on these other mines.
And, and add to that, uh, Tim, data on the other mines, how much data, are they open or closed?
I'm gonna, we're gonna try and figure out how we can filter, uh, the inactive mines out.
Yep, and I'll, I'll get with you to see some more ideas. Now, with that, for our constituents, um, even though we only have to have one public hearing, we'll come back and gather that all the information, it'll be the next meeting, if you wanna come back, we'll hear from our staff on that information. We won't rehash the concerns that you have now, but we've, we've noted them, but you'll get a chance to hear those, and if there's anything additional, we can hear that at that time, okay? So we're gonna motion in a second to table it, uh, for the next meeting, which is, uh, November fifteenth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it is table to, uh, senior amist, to table to, November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, we'll have more information in approval or denial, it'll be a better situation, okay? All right, so that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we can mention that, um, it will not be six, it'll be, the, the meeting will start at five, and this will be towards the front of the meeting.
Yes, if you're here tonight for this item, for the constituent applying, and for those who are in opposition, it'll happen at five o'clock, it'll be an old business, it'll be one of the first items of the business, so you won't be here if you're going through all the other stuff, okay? All right, and then, uh, that takes care of item number twelve, which is the second reading, we can't have it since it was tabled. Um, who was here tonight for the, uh, item number thirteen, the, the, um, Horsepin Road Mine? Is it the same constituents? Same applicant too, or is that a different applicant?
I, I personally think if we table that one for this, all this information, we need to do the same thing.
I'm thinking if I go hear anything new, 'cause I have more issue on Horsepin than I do on McCall Road.
It, it's the same applicant, um, probably different folks to talk about it, um.
Is there, is there different ones who did not speak to the other one that are, to speak only to the Horsepin?
And it, it is a little different, it'll, it would be maintained by the property owner as a recreation pond.
Just to clear this up, I mean, does McGarley Company own this property already, or they're looking to buy this property?
No, Richard Hall owns it.
So nobody, I see. So somebody else owns, McGarley doesn't own.
You own the property?
Richard, Richard Hall own it, they will operate the pit, um, and then it'll be a recreation pond for him.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead, it's very similar, I'm gonna go and do a brief public hearing, 'cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to table this one too, for the same reasons. It's right close together, but I wanna honor those who are here. If anyone tonight is, uh, wanting to speak for the pit, you wanna give us a synopsis, you'll have another opportunity later, but.
Yeah, I'm Elick Mesker with EMC Engineering, so this one will be, um, a, a smaller pond. Um, it'll be dug for Mr. Hall, since it's more than two acres, it has to be classified as a surface mine and go through this process of being rezoned and having an EPD mining permit. Um, it's positioned to the back of the property, um, it's, I believe, a hundred foot off of the back property line, plus another fifty feet, um, off the back, and then there's, you know, several hundred feet of buffer on either side, and I think it's maybe fourteen-hundred or over a thousand feet from the front of the property. So it's situated in the very back of the property, um, just as far away as you can get from anybody.
So that's not impacting residential as much as the other one was, is what you're saying?
No, and on either side is basically undevelopable wetland areas, so it's really, um, really very minor.
See, it's right beside the neighborhood though, isn't it?
It is, um, there's a strip of land that's owned, I think, by the, by that neighborhood association, I guess it's common area or wetland. So it's, it's several hundred feet wide, and then, you know, it's.
Does Mr. Hall live on the property?
I'm not.
This is a residential, I mean, it's gonna be his personal pond when he's done? See, this is, this is my whole issue with both of these. This guy wants a pond. He's gonna get a pond dug, but we're gonna tell him he can't.
No, I'm not saying I would on this, in this situation.
So it, it's just a process you have to go through, um, based on the county ordinance.
He's gotta get a permit from us and the state to dig a pond on his property.
Yeah.
But then his goal is to find, but, but he's also gonna sell the dirt.
Which is fine.
Wow, why not?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I.
I'd sell it too.
No, I agree.
And I'd get a fish pond.
I would wanna be in the right place to do that.
So, okay, so we're gonna tell him he can't?
I didn't say that.
No, no, but I'm saying, this is my problem with it.
I'm looking for, 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 for more data, there, there are other alternatives, I mean.
And so, you know, this.
Haven't we recently paved Horsepin?
So you know, this is, um.
The house, can a brick truck not deliver bricks?
Then they need a helicopter for worse to have that.
You see what I mean?
And we're talking about having the pits in close proximity of, of uses, is, is very close.
Blow it up, whatever. But there's people around these places, and they matter.
He wants a pond. Why does it matter his neighbor don't want him to have a pond?
It's not about having a pond, it's about having a hundred dump trucks a day going by my house. That's the issue.
And I'm sorry to, it just.
I have no problem with a man having a pond.
You got a good point there, and I agree with that. What I'm looking at is, uh, if I wanted to dig a pond, I thought about digging a pond on my property, you know? And I wanted at least a one or two acre pond, and it does make sense to sell the dirt. But something like that, if I were to apply, you could put, or if you're gonna dig a pond, you're gonna dig it within the next five years, or ten, you could put something so that it's a minimum impact, 'cause you're not really trying to look at having a business out there, it's just common sense, we don't want government ever not have common sense. If Wesley wants to dig a pond, he should be able to dig a pond, and he shouldn't have to give the dirt away if he can help pay the cost of it.
Regardless, it's gonna be leaving in a truck, whether you sell it or just give it away.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a leaving in a truck.
I think there's, those are conditions that you can talk. I think there's, those are conditions that you can talk as an applicant about.
We'll be done in six months.
And we can say, oh, okay, I, I get it.
But the dirt's got to go somewhere. I mean, that's the whole point. You can't, I mean, there's a reason it goes hand in hand.
Yeah.
Got to haul the dirt away.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there, there's some extenuating circumstances that I could be altered on in my thoughts about it versus maybe a ten, twenty acre, thirty acre pit that's going to create for thirty years, is going to create some issues for our roads and stuff. That, that's my thought. Anyway, I appreciate it.
Okay. What, what I was trying to say was it is in close proximity to a lot of development, including the parkway. So I believe it may be within, you know, a half a mile or a mile from the, from some of the parkway. So you, you talked about having it in close proximity and a need, you, you know, to get rid of it, you want it as close to a use as possible. Um, so, you know, that, that kind of fits the bill on, on that.
And, and here's where it could be a little different from just a pit. You can't tell us where the dirt's going. You're making a good point there. Like when Kroger came, I tried to get them to come out and look at my land because I wanted a two acre pond. But it was going to be moved in like four months, and it was going to be done.
That's great. But I mean, should have been saying I can't have a pond because I can't get it done in six months. Did they say, hey, we'll take your dirt?
It's, it's different.
It's going to take a couple of years though.
It's different issues. It's different issues about the traffic.
And if you look, if you look, you can see on the aerial, there's probably, you know, ten ponds you can see that have been dug in this area. So, you know, dirt is coming from somewhere, going somewhere.
I hear you.
And even if they don't, and you know.
You need to tell me there's ten ponds around that guy?
I mean, you can look at the area and count them. And so, uh, you know.
Ponds, you know, I kept the dirt inside.
All right.
And so the other thing is too, even if they don't dig it off of this site, development's happening in this area, so it's just going to be trucked from maybe further away, which has, which has a greater impact.
Yep. All right. All right, I'm going to have a public hearing for anyone in opposition to this particular project. Anything different from what we already heard on the previous project, because it's kind of the same area. See, anyone want to speak additional? Opposition to it. All right, hearing nothing, I'm going to close the public hearing, but I'm going to entertain a motion to table this one to get that same information, and let's come back and let's address them and put this puppy to rest this next meeting. Okay?
So I make a motion to table this to the next meeting in order to gather more information on.
As, as exemplified in the previous tabling of item number eleven. Okay, motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. So we'll gather some more information. If you want to come back, if you're for this item as well, we'll give our report, and then we'll have one brief public hearing to discuss it, and we'll make a decision. Okay? That takes care of item number thirteen and then number fourteen, which is the second reading. So we have item number fifteen, if I'm on the right schedule. Planning Board recommends approval of an application by, and notice that Mr. Deloche has returned to the bench. Planning Board recommends approval of an application by Daniel Ben Yezrel. It's like Yez- Yezaral. As agent for Effingham IDA for a sketch plan for a Parker's Convenience Store located on Old River Road, Zone B three, Matt number three thirty, Paul's number forty-six in the first district.
A few months ago, you rezoned this from B two to B three to accommodate a convenience store. We asked them to rezone to B three to be consistent with other similar types of convenience store gas stations in the county. So now it's rezoned to B three. It's not intended to be a truck stop. In fact, you all added a condition that trucks were not permitted to park overnight. So we have the sketch plan now, and it's very similar to what you saw at the time of the rezoning. And in fact, there is one slight change as a result, well, there's two changes as a result of Planning Board. At the Planning Board meeting, there was some discussion over the buffer, the, the ten-foot landscape strip along Old River Road. And so today we did receive a revision to the sketch plan, and the only difference you'll see is the circled area. They've more clearly shown the ten-foot vegetative strip along Old River Road. So that was just to tidy that up. At the Planning Board, one of the members was concerned that the proposed full movement access points on Old River Road, you know, he's concerned that they, whether they met our access management policy, and that's something we're going to look further into. Uh, when we were meeting with the applicant, this was when the county engineer was still on staff, and, you know, he was familiar that we did talk. So there, there really was never any question or discussion about issues with distance between driveways. So we will look into that and clarify. But in any event, there is a traffic study requirement, and the Planning Board, just to, to address their own concerns, they did add a condition that these proposed driveways would only be, um, finally approved if the transportation impact assessment did justify them. So staff is recommending alternative one for this, uh, sketch plan with the condition added by the Planning Board.
You say approval of sketch, this is a zoning.
This is the sketch plan. It's been rezoned. It was rezoned a few months ago.
And then you had public hearings on sketch plans.
No, there's no public hearing, but we do have to take it to you to.
Okay, it's a public hearing here. Okay, that's what's confusing me. I'm trying to think, were we in a public, okay.
Out of fairness, I know, uh, that it was Mr. Richard Sapp was the one that had concerns. Does this meet his concerns? I know he's not, wasn't, I'm just.
Yeah, the, 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 the concept plan always showed the pond up here in the corner, you know, which is at the north end of the property, which is next to his property. So there's no change. Really, the, the, the change I mentioned was just to clarify that the ten-foot landscape strip was there uh, and would be planned around. So really, there isn't a change, but the change was added during rezoning to prohibit overnight parking.
And I say that because I remember him telling him, but he wasn't going to be notified, or was he, or?
Uh, for sketch plan, we.
There were letters, there were notification letters sent out for the sketch plan as well.
Yeah, there's no sign, but there are letters.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just remember that conversation.
And an add in the paper.
Any other questions, discussions? Motion to approve alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, that includes our public hearing items tonight. Um, would you like about a fifteen-minute recess before we go to finish our new business?
Please.
All right, take a fifteen-minute recess. It is, uh, seven thirty, seven forty-five. We come back. We shouldn't be very long if we come back.
All righty, I think a couple of days ago, we finished up on item number...
We got rid of all them people anyway.
Finished up on new business number two, we're on new business number three.
Mr. Chairman, we have some guests with us for one of the items on the agenda if we can move it up. The one for...
Yeah, let me see here what we got here.
See where it is. Pond and Company is here with us, so we can address that item.
I'm sorry, I should have recognized that.
We did that one last.
That's item number seven.
Item numbers, we're gonna go to item number seven, we're gonna be all over the page tonight.
Is it six?
Six and seven, yep.
Oh, six and seven.
The study is number six, and then there's some change orders.
Good evening, my name is Angela Stanley, I'm the project manager. We entered into a contract with Pond to do a traffic study on Old Augusta Road Corridor. And I have Mr. Richard here to go over that and give you all a brief synopsis of it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, there's a little slide presentation up there, so just kinda... All right, no, that's all right.
There you go.
Okay, so there's one that kinda says, yeah, if you go to the next slide, it kinda just shows the...
We need a screen right now.
The agenda overview.
Keep saying that, so people can see that.
Yeah, we oughta, we oughta get IT to give us a screen down here so that our guests can see it.
Yes, well, we're trying to figure out how we can get one on the podium, but if not, we can try and get one there. Cause we want them to be able to touch it, to point it out to you.
Yeah, they could, they could.
And so we're trying to figure out how to technologically do that.
Oh, awesome.
Take your time as long as you have by the next meeting and be all right.
No, no pressure.
And I've got my notes here, so if I get out of sequence, y'all could tell me. Well, thanks for letting us come tonight and to talk with you all about the Old Augusta Road Corridor. And we're real excited to get to look at that corridor, there's a lot of growth and development that's occurring along that area. And I'm trying, I know the county's trying to plan for that, and so that's what we looked at. So, we'll do a quick overview, look at current conditions, talk a little bit about some of these various items about the growth and recommendations of the study. So, the next slide kinda shows an image of the, you know, the corridor area there. And what we looked at was Old Augusta Road basically from the 21 corridor up to Chimney Road to look at and planning that. And so, we looked at the number of travel lanes needed, intersection control and safety. And considerations were definitely the ongoing development and future growth and the significant truck traffic on the corridor. So, the next slide shows an image of the, you know, an image of the corridor and aerial, and a photo of it from today. So, you know, there's a lot of changes going on out there with the growth. Right now, you have a, you know, a two-lane road with a rural section. You can see from the cleared area that you have quite a bit of right-of-way out there, you have some availability of things to work with, which is good. And it's got a good existing level of service on the road, it's a two-lane rural cross-section, about seventy-six hundred cars or vehicles per day, I should say. With about seven percent trucks, which is not a huge amount of trucks percentage-wise now, that will grow as we, you know, as this development comes online. So, again, ongoing development, future truck and that significant truck traffic are what we're looking at. Another part of this, if you go to the next slide, it shows the intersection of Old Augusta Road at State Route 21. The overall level of service at this intersection is, i- is pretty good. It's at a level of service D, so it's not a failing intersection like some of the others are along the corridor. But it's heavily, you know, still pretty heavily traveled on 21. We'll be looking at that with the new development traffic and what that does with this intersection, meeting the future needs. But then also, what does it look like from an aesthetic standpoint as a gateway as you're coming into the community? So, the county asks us to, staff asks us to kinda, kinda look and give some consideration to that as well. So, the next, the next slide kinda shows is a little bit pretty busy, it's got a lot of information about the ongoing and future growth. And you can see a line diagram on there, we've kinda labeled the, labeled the intersections on there from A to L. And we won't go through all the detail of A to L here, but our, but our report does have that reference point. So, you can find any of those intersections as you go, as you work your way through, through that at some point. But the corridor itself is 2.7 miles, there are two existing commercial driveways that are active now. Nine commercial driveways and seven intersections will be, you know, new area, are coming on new. And there's a desired spacing for full-access intersections along this corridor. When we talked with the, with the county, they wanted to maintain that rural spacing standard. And look to what the Georgia DOT has for its rural spacing standards for full-access intersections. So, 2640 is the spacing that's recommended there, which is a half a mile to where you would have a full-access intersection. And so, the plan we laid out here is sort of relating on that. The reason for that is to keep the traffic flowing on the intersections so that you don't have, you know, interference between those. And to, you know, to kinda minimize the, you know, kinda the disruption to flow, you know, overall. The new, new development that's planned out there is, I mean, amazing, 12.3 million square feet, which is a lot of development, warehouse and light commercials. So, we, we looked at all of that development, the amount of traffic that it was gonna generate from those different developments. And plugged that in from a numbers standpoint so that we could look at the traffic flow and what's, what'll be coming out of the, of the intersections there. And another thing is maintaining that access to the Park of Commerce. So, we wanna make sure that there's, there's an access, even the Park of Commerce accesses straight down to 21, providing that access over to Old Augusta Road as well. And expanded residential at Leo the Sanctuary and a Parker's Convenience Store. So, those are some things that are happening down there near the Parker's and the extension down there near the intersection. And again, trying to make this, if you go to the next slide, this kinda jumps a little bit to what we had with some, some recommendations. So, this shows that same, same graphic there, but you can see there's some, some other, you know, information on there about, about recommendations. And so, our, our goal here in looking at this mixture of automobile and truck traffic is how do we really keep conflicts down between these vehicles? And make it as safe a road as possible. So, all the intersections that we've identified here on here, where there would be a full-access, you know, break are shown as roundabouts. With the exception of at Leo the Sanctuary, we have something that's called a restricted crossing U-turn or an R-cut type of an intersection. The idea is all, all of these types of intersections are shown by federal highway to be things that they, that they use actually as safety countermeasures. Proven safety countermeasures, roundabouts and, and these R-cuts. So, we're putting in, in the recommendations here, intersections that should operate at a, at a, at a safe, you know, as safe as possible of a configuration to reducing those conflicts. We, so we looked at also the number of lanes will be needed along the roadway based on the generated traffic. And so, you can see, we're recommending ultimately there'd be a four-lane section from 21 up to the area past the Becknell Truck Entrance in Chesterfield. And then, then you can probably retain the two-lane section further north from that. So, we're showing the, the three orange circles are where roundabouts are recommended along the, along the corridor. At North Gate Park of Commerce, another one at the existing SD's facility, and then one at Chesterfield and the Becknell Truck Entrance.
SD's, is that because across the other side, there's a planned development there?
There's not, oh, go ahead.
It's for spacing. And so, if you take in consideration, if you were to four-lane this, all the other entrances like Cowan South, Exeter, Trailer Yard, et cetera. Would be right turn out, right turn in only. You need to have, you need to space out these roundabouts so that those trucks will be able to turn around fairly close to where they, where they exit. If they're going in the wrong direction, you know what I mean?
So, below Bucknell, they can only go right out and right in and go to the next roundabout, turn around and come back.
That's right. And so, we wanted to make, make sure there wasn't any point where the roundabouts were too far away, where that becomes a problem.
Pardon, I got you. So, there is a fourth roundabout recommended at Crown North, green?
Yeah, those would be single-lane roundabouts because it's only a two-lane road up there that's needed.
Okay.
So, they're a different color because of that. A little simpler opera, simpler operation and look to them, and we'll show you a little bit about the concept for, for these roundabouts for the multi-lane ones. But the, yeah, the idea is each of these spacings, if you add up those spacings between the intersections, they're all slightly over 2640 feet. So, that gives us basically every half-mile, you've got that opportunity to make that turnaround. You don't wanna be too frequent because if someone turns out right and you're on a four-lane road, you want them to have some time if they're gonna go left to kinda, you know, move over to that left lane. And then, you know, and then, and then take that, that next roundabout over. But yeah, that's, that's how that would operate, and then at Leo the Sanctuary, there would be a left turn in, but no left turn out. And so, they would have to take a right turn there and then go up. And we did show, you see two little yellow U-turn arrows there, those would be also U-turns. They're not, wouldn't be a roundabout there, but that would be like a U-turn, which is part of that R-cut kinda configuration that's, that's put in place.
What if this would be an answer on 21 for the state to come up with, you know, the Park of Commerce and so forth?
Well, and it's, it's funny, you mentioned that when Roger, we, when Roger mentioned to me about that, you know, what could be used as a turnaround? Which is about, you know, a quarter of a mile up the road from the Park of Commerce entrance. I started to look into research about what if we converted that into an R-cut? Now, the difference would be, right now, you can turn left and you can turn left going in both directions. But an R-cut, you can only go in the one direction. So, that would require GDOT to make some modifications there. But it would allow you to make the entrance to, the entrance and exit to Park of Commerce a right turn in, right turn out. It's a little, we, we haven't gone into details on that, I did bring that up to Richard as an option, but it just wasn't ready for this presentation.
Something to increase that safety there.
Yeah, we'll look a little more, a little more at that with some numbers, you know.
Similar to what, what you're proposing, or I guess has included the R-cut at Chimney and 21, wasn't that a R-cut? I think, or am I totally mistaken?
Chimney and 21?
I, I thought there was something at Chimney and 21, did I totally read that wrong?
Oh, on, in, in this presentation here?
Not in the, in the, in the report that was sent.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I think we did, I think they did look at that that could be an R-cut, that's right, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, our folks were looking at that, although that's outside the corridor, but yeah, we did, we did kinda put it, no, I'm sorry, no, but you're right, it was in the report, you're, you're absolutely right. Our guys looked at that one as well. And so, yeah, definitely, you know, benefits here, the intersections are designed for safety and, you know, spacing for smooth operations and allows some phased implementation. And so, we'll talk about the phased implementation that you may wanna think about as well. If you go to, you know, go to the next slide, we'll, we'll show another, just kinda another aspect is, is that the 21 intersection, Old Augusta Road, there's some improvements that are needed there as well. You can see the existing, existing conditions are showing, you know, just the lane configuration there and the white arrows. One thing we think we need is some additional left turn capacity actually going up into, onto Old Augusta Road. And the reason is we've got traffic that's going to these new developments. We think of all the truck traffic, but there's also going to be automobile traffic for folks who are going there and working, all the workers that are going there. And that's, uh, creating some more, more volume in that, that sense. And then longer term recommendation, when you get closer to full buildout, is that we would also want to probably put a third left turn lane coming down out of, uh, Old Augusta Road onto.
How are we, how am I oriented on this? Am I looking north, south?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, that would be looking, yeah, if you're looking at the photo, uh, the, there on the, the lower left, then, then that would be sort of the, to the northeast, which would be going up Old Augusta Road. To your right would be going down towards, um, uh, down towards I-95.
Yeah, but on these, on these, uh, the square diagrams.
Yeah, they're, they're almost like that. I guess if you, yeah, they're, they're, they're more up and down, but they're, yeah, they, yeah, you should twist them slightly to the right, I guess, and you'd have that. So yeah, so coming from the top would be, the top down is Old Augusta. Yeah. Yeah. It's Old Augusta's coming down from the top on those diagrams. So adding that third lane there, we also think when, when we look at, and we look 20, 20 plus years out here. So that was where we, um, thought, well, at that, at that point, 21 itself is needing to have an additional through lane on it, which probably doesn't surprise everybody. But it's, uh, you know, getting, getting to be a, you know, an issue there. So, so we showed those as longer term recommendations, things that you're going to need to do, you know, and, you know, a little more in the future.
Well, so on the paper, they're pushing for six lanes on 21, so that's why the three lanes would go into three lanes.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yes.
Six lanes was, was recommended in this study, I believe, on 21. Which, no surprise.
And then the next slide kind of shows some, some idea of, uh, what, what could be some phasing on there. Uh, phase one could be to install these three multi-lane roundabouts on the southern section. So you, that's where a lot of your active development is going on now. And then improve the turn lanes on 21 and that R-cut at Leo and Parker. So basically doing some of the intersection cleanup. And then you could come back maybe in phase two and install the single lane roundabouts on the northern section. And then maybe a phase three would be widening to the four lanes and two lanes with a median. And so the idea there would be, again, to kind of preserve that right in, right out. You'd probably go with the four lanes with, with the median down the middle. Now, the median won't have to be, wouldn't have to be as wide. You, you might want to landscape it or grass it, so you might want to make it wide enough to do that, um, to not have to have it just be a concrete median. Same thing as you go further to the north with the two lanes, you may choose to put a median on there to prevent a lot of folks turning, you know, turning out or any, you could get another development that comes in and says, oh, I'd like to have full access here. And you can say, well, no, you've already got the median up there.
See, these R-cuts are going to drive all these truckers when they come out of their warehousing to the right.
Yeah.
Have a tune to go left, which is, it's phase one and two taking care of all the safety issues.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll take care of the traffic.
Otherwise you're going to end up with another Park of Commerce trying to turn left, trying to turn left.
Yeah, but it's trying to turn left, yeah.
I like, that's a good way to do it, phase one and two. Take care of the safety concerns and then come back and take care of the flowing of the traffic.
I'm trying to picture the, the multi-lane roundabout with only two lane after phase two. I guess that.
Yeah, well, the next, the next slide shows a little bit of that. So, so the, the, the next slide, um, shows kind of a, a concept of the multi-lane roundabout. And so the idea would be you'd have a two lane road and you would, you would widen that out at the roundabout. And, and actually that may last you for a while because your intersections tend to be your capacity constraint points. So you may, that may take you longer to have to widen it because you've got that capacity in there. And then when you go to do the four lane, you can see you could just, you just line the four lane up with what's, what's already built and you're not having to, to, to build the intersections again. So that would be what we would, um, you know, uh, how, how we recommend that you, you kind of do some of those. And, um, so we have those, uh, the, yeah, this concept, uh, design here and, um. They're not, they're not inexpensive to build these, uh, these multi-frames. And I'll show you one on the, the, the next slide shows one in place. It's called a.
12 million square feet of warehousing should pay for this, to be honest with you. And that's who needs to pay for is the warehousing industry. And it, it would improve traffic flow for our whole, our whole constituents from, from, uh, 275 all the way down. It would be improved. All those subdivisions in Rankin, dumping out Augusta will get the benefit of improved highway. But they'll be, what do you estimate? $7 million possibly in revenues?
Yeah, if you look at, um, if you look at property tax revenue, uh, off of, uh, if you include Gitze in this as well, which you really should, that, that brings it up to about, um, almost 20 million square feet on the industrial side.
When does Gitze kick in?
What's that?
When does Gitze kick in for tax?
Well, they, um.
Well, they have some, some that aren't, hopefully.
Most of theirs are, they have two, I believe, two warehouses that aren't, um, Pacific Cycles and Shaw. And they're, they, uh, they go to, um, gradually go into full tax over the next eight years.
But all the new construction should be.
All the new stuff, straight up.
Right.
That should be, the revenue should be there for doing this. And still, like we said before, giving back to our constituents as well. We got to make sure we communicate that well to the constituents.
And we just showed on this next slide, we showed kind of an example of this, uh, it's called a turbo roundabout configuration. So this is the same one as on the concept design. And, um, the, so, so the size of yours would be bigger than this one shown here because it would be sized up more for trucks. In fact, if you've seen the ones at the port, they're about 200 foot in diameter, and that's about what you need to make sure those trucks circulate. But unlike the port, one of the things we have to do here with the, on the roadway system is make, make sure that we don't, um, we don't allow people to just fly right through the roundabout because then that, that takes away the safety benefit and causes all kinds of other problems. And so, um, this, this design has some s- small median areas in there. And I say medians, they're really sort of mountable curbs that are, that are on, uh, that are between the travel lanes. And so what that does is it allows the, a slowing effect of that traffic, even though they were going through. Cause they're not, they can't change lanes as they, as they whiz through the roundabout. And so it also makes it very easy to navigate. If you've been through a roundabout and sometimes you're like, where, you know, which lane do I go to? If you stare at this for, for a minute or two, you realize, okay, as I, as I pull into the lane, my options are really limited to the things that the arrows say I should be doing. You know, I go into that lane, uh, you know, like from the, from the left of the photo there, if you're in the leftmost travel lane, you pull in the middle area. Well, you really, once you're in there, you can't decide to go right. You'd be going over the curb, you know? And you, you just kind of, you kind of wind yourself around and you, and go out where you want. So we think that this is a good design that will, will accommodate, uh, folks who want to understand how to utilize a roundabout well. But also with the trucks to kind of allow them to have a large diameter, but yet keep those speeds controlled. Cause we have to do something they call like a fastest path calculation that they have, you have to do to make sure they can't go more than about 20 miles an hour, you know, kind of through the, through the roundabout.
Yeah, we get one turned over in the port about every week.
Oh, really? Oh, wow. Okay.
Roundabouts, yeah, they fly through the roundabouts. Something that could control that would be.
Interesting, yeah. So that, yeah, this, this would keep them from going quite as, as fast through there.
And also keep in mind that only one of them, uh, only one of these roundabouts is a four-legged roundabout. Um, uh, well, there's potential for a second one to be. Um, so Becknell and Chesterfield, um, is the one four-legged, uh, that's, that seems high likelihood. Northgate, if we can line it up with an exit for, uh, Park of Commerce, that could potentially be one. But initially it might just be a single, um, a three-legged roundabout. So those three-legged ones will perform even better, um, just simply because it won't have the volume come from one direction.
Yeah. And if you can provide that Park of Commerce though, that would be nice to have that additional connection.
Can you drive me through this one one time? Cause I'm just trying to.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I'll call it, you're, you're eastbound.
Okay.
You see in the innermost lane, there's three silver cars?
Yeah.
What's the benefit from being in that lane versus the far right lane where you see a, a white truck and a red car?
Well, they're, they're both, both of those lanes go through. So if you're in the morning rush hour, then you, then you line up in whichever one makes the most sense to let less traffic so you can go through.
Go all the way around.
But if you're all the way right, you're committed to going straight.
Yeah, that's right.
Through your left, they're not like this in France. You're in your left lane, you're kind of waiting to get to get out.
You need to be in that left hand, left lane if you're going to go 270 degrees around and get off.
Yeah, right. Yeah. If you're going left, you got to be in the left lane. If you're going right, you got to be in the right lane. The other two, two do go through. But, um, but yeah, and you can see there's more people in the right-hand lane probably here because this is, I think this is taken in the morning and this is Jacksonville University. So there's probably more students going in there. The right tent lane does tend to go a little quicker, just like on all roundabouts, you know, so that's, they're probably, they've probably, you know, in their minds evened out the amount of time because they've driven through it a little bit. But this is an example in North Florida. There's several others that are under development in Georgia, but haven't been implemented yet in Georgia. But, um, it's something that Georgia DOT is well aware of and they, yeah.
That drawing is the ones, the left lane, looks like they're almost at a stop. Versus most roundabouts you're entering it.
What did it say that again?
Still yield, but you.
Yeah, but.
If there's traffic, I mean, they will back a little bit, you know.
These are like this when they're entering. The three white cars you're talking about with a red car coming, it's almost perpendicular. That's what you're trying to, that's what you're trying to get away from it.
You are, but those are, those are also low, you know, they're very low speed movements when you're yielding to go in.
Stop signs are supposed to be zero movement, but they get a lot of T-bones.
Well, that's true. That's true.
And they're all at yield, so you're not stopping there. You're just kind of.
It'll take some getting used to for people, but once they got it, you know, you, if I'm going straight, stay right.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd like the other ones better where you just.
You have the angle there.
It's a yield still, but it's, it's not a T-bone.
What's the difference?
Well, and there may, there may be a way to, you know, I mean, and that's something you can look at in the design too. There's a way to kind of shift the entering lanes further. Like if you, if you took those ones, this is sort of more what they call like a radial design where the, where the, where the road's coming in sort of straight into the roundabout. You can design it to where you, you push it more and then angle it as it comes in more, you know?
Then they had some constraints on space too, you know, of land area to work in.
Yeah, this, this one was, is a very radial design because of the fact that the, the right of way is very constrained here. Um, but you'd have a little more flexibility. I don't know how we, I'd have to go back to the slide to see how we laid the other one out for the concept, but, but that'd be something you could adjust. You know, there, there's a lot of adjustment you can do as to how you want the.
And one thing we'll probably need, if, if we go to more roundabouts is as far as aesthetics, landscaping, better maintenance of them so they stay attract. Cause you got a lot of green space in the, you know, going them a little.
And I actually, my conversations was with the IDA on that, um, is that, um, you have four roundabouts or five roundabouts, uh, in an industrial sector that, um, you know, we need, we need to work with them on, uh, on the maintenance of it.
That's right.
Somebody help us find out some of this.
The next slide shows one more, uh, view of this, but it does show tractor trailer going through it. And keep in mind, this is a smaller roundabout than the one we'd have, but it's, uh, but it does show the, um, the tractor trailer kind of. Even, even this size was, this size was designed for, to accommodate tractor trailers, but not to necessarily facilitate them, you know, moving through as smoothly as you would in a larger diameter roundabout. So again, yeah, then just to, one, one other thing, if you go to the next slide, kind of shows, um, the, uh, just some information about the, in the gateway area. And that was something I know that Tim had asked a little bit about too, is we're talking about trying to improve the aesthetics there. So we had our, our landscape architects just kind of take a quick look at this, at this, at this stage. And you've got, you all have your, your signs that you're going to be putting up, uh, the, you know, for, for Effingham County, kind of on the Old Augusta roadside. And on the other side, you've got kind of what, what you, what you can see in the photo to the right. And, and you can see, um, the size and scale of the intersection a little bit when you look at the one to the right. The fact they've got those large monument, the, those large pillars and all that, but from the street level, they're kind of far away. They, you know, and, and so one thing that, um, when we asked them, what, what kind of stuff would you do here? You know, LA said, well, this is a good example of where you could spend a lot of money on hardscaping big monuments, but you really need to, if you want to make it look well, spend good money on the landscaping. So it's sort of like, if you've got a monument sign, you know, that says welcome effing, that it kind of draws everyone's attention to that. And then it ties the four corners together. So even if you don't have the same components on each four corners, if you can tie it together with the landscaping, they thought that that was maybe better than, than spending lots of money on, on hardscaping because of just the sheer size. But that was just an initial, you know, an initial glance those guys did at it. It wasn't, uh, you know, to, you know, to, to design level and all, but just trying to tie that, that part together. Any other?
I think we commented and discussed our way through it.
Okay. All right. If there's any further questions come up or whatever, make sure, you know, to get, get, you know, with Tim and I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, discussion on this? That's item number six. That was the presentation. Um, item number seven. Do we need to get into those bonds whether here?
Did you want to approve it or? It was.
Yeah, sure. Is there a motion to approve the study as completed?
So I moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Key for second Mr. Lodge to approve the study as presented. All favors aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Here you go. It passes unanimously. We'll go back to item number. Item number three. Consideration to approve a warranty D final plat and infrastructure agreement for Oglethorpe Landing subdivision. Phase one consisting of 31 lots located off of Ebenezer Road. Map number 466, excuse me, 446, parcel number 13, the fifth district.
So this, uh, final plat is for phase one of Oglethorpe Landing. It'll be 31 lots, as you noted. Water and sewer provided by the city of Springfield, so there's an infrastructure agreement that is also part of this approval. Uh, we have communicated with the city of Springfield. They've approved everything. They've received their bond, so everything is fine on their side. EOM inspected the right of way and stormwater infrastructure of phase one, and they recommend approval. Uh, they also reviewed the bond recommendation and recommended approval of that. And so we do have a bond for $50,000, 332, $50,332 and 82 cents. Um, staff reviewed the final plat and, uh, have recommend approval of that. Uh, the county attorney has recommended all the legal documents, so everything is ready to go. Staff are recommending alternative one.
Just remind me legally, that bond is not actual check or something we hold. It's like a, a right to go to this bank and cash the bond if they fail.
Right. It's a, it's a letter of credit. It's a letter of credit. Sometimes we get checked, in this case for $50,000.
Can you remember how that worked and make sure I understand?
So we hold them and then after a year, we can do an inspection and release the bond. Exactly.
On this procedure, do we, I was thinking about this because of the problems we had in Belmont Glen before. Do we take on the roads before we finish the development? In this case, we, we did. We are.
That's what's being proposed and that's what we've been doing, uh, as projects come in by phases, we'll take them.
So if the, the road gets damaged, we can go on the bond? Okay, I see. So we do have.
This bond is for road and stormwater infrastructure only. Springfield is holding the bond for the water and sewer.
So do we have a bond that will cover road damages as they build?
That's what it's 50,000.
That's what the, this is.
So that is what it's for.
So if a concrete truck comes in and busts up a sidewalk and they don't fix it, we can use the bond to fix it?
Sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowners association or, or the developer until they're turned over.
Create a rut in the road in the first year, we could.
Right, when the OEM goes to.
Fix it or we can use the bond to fix it?
Exactly. When we, when we go to do the final inspection, that would be determined then.
Is that common everywhere in other municipalities or? My concern is, you know, you get in there and then have phase three, and by the time phase three comes along and the where, the roads are almost worn out and like we had at Belmont and.
The issue is Roger, I think, is that banks will not lend the money unless they're owned by the, the county or the city where it's at. They want to know that's going to be maintained. So we agree to take them after engineering inspection, but we get a bond for a little extra comfort that if there is damage during the construction of the homes, we have a, a way to clean that way back up.
So the case of Belmont, where we were able to file on the bond and get some money back on that one, or how did we? Do you remember that one?
That might've been way past the bond. That, that failure I think.
That's what I worry about. Failures past the bond, what happens, you know? And I, and I get it. I know, I know they want to see, I don't know where you could have a letter of intent to get, to turn them over or what. Cause you don't, you don't have to have, you can have a private road and still get financing.
But let me add a little more to that.
You don't have to do that.
In Belmont, for example, we've changed, y'all might remember two or three years ago, you might remember.
We did change the aggregate and standards.
We did with the, the roads, the access roads or deeper asphalt, uh, better beds. They have to muck it out to build a better base. Didn't do that Belmont Glen. They found that there was a lot of moisture and stuff that created those issues.
I've heard that's put some undue stress on some of their builders by doing that because of the height. I'm not, I don't know all the tech, technical data, but.
Once again, it's finding the best that we can do.
I don't think that's true. You don't have to have city roads to get financing. You can have private roads and get financing. You know, and then turn them over to the ci, to the city or the county or whatever. Just some thoughts, I mean, as we go.
Yeah, you do. It depends on the lender.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen plenty of them built with private roads.
Depends on the lender.
Yeah.
It depends what you're doing. Subdivision versus a resident.
So you can't build a private entrance and drive and you guys wouldn't finance that?
You have to show, um, someone that maintains it. I know like my neighbor, when he refinanced his house, I had to sign off on a form that the bank gave them about the easement, cause I live on a private easement. But it requires some kind of documentation.
And one reason this is changing, I'll give you an example. He, he, you know, I've been ranking those private roads. And, uh, people used to come to Rankin when I was working down there saying, fix these roads. We don't own them. It's a private corporation that went to funk. And so now there's nobody.
We've got problems with that as well.
That's why the, uh, banks are doing that. So I think it's the best of both worlds. Make sure the engineering specs is built to standard, get a bond. And we've also increased our requirements for the entry roads versus the cul-de-sac roads. All that together, hopefully we'll have a more balanced approach to it.
That's all I'm worried about is, you know, us getting hit on the back end of things and.
I think this is under the assumption that it is complete, the development. They just might not have houses built, but the development itself is complete, right?
Well, this is phase one, so this is that first leg into it. There will be more.
I think you're thinking more like a gated subdivision will be similar to what you're saying.
Exactly. It'd be private roads and gated. You have to be, you have to be private to be gated.
That's right. That's right. But these obviously built to county standards for the reason of, yeah.
All right. Uh, is there any other discussion, question or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number four, consideration to approve and publish new job description for geographical informations.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, both of these positions, um, uh, we hire them and the GIS currently at the time was at a, a much different kind of, uh, lower level. Uh, and so as their responsibilities have risen, um, their job descriptions really don't fit, um, the scope of work that they're doing anymore. Uh, this would amount to essentially promotions for both positions, uh, but they're, uh, but they're doing a, a tremendous job. Uh, and so, um, it would be, um, Pamela Melser, who's, as you, many of you know, is our, who will be our GIS manager and our GIS, uh, tech, Danny Frazier, um, uh, would basically back into the position that, of the job description she used to hold. So it just kind of bumps both of them up, uh, to better describe the responsibilities they have. Uh, staff is recommending alternative one.
Question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration to approve to continue the contract with Sun Life or stop loss insurance.
Yes, um, I briefly mentioned this when we, uh, passed the other two, um, uh, items with regards to our health insurance coverage last, um, uh, last meeting. Uh, but we had just gotten the quote that day, so this had to carry over to this meeting. Um, so this is, um, our stop loss coverage. Um, this protects the county under a partially self-funded plan. Um, uh, and, uh, the stop loss premium, uh, increase, I mean, originally they came to with the quota sixteen point two. Uh, but after seeing a few more months worth of, uh, experience from us and also some negotiating, uh, by our partner, USI, uh, that increase, um, uh, was lowered to a seven point three.
What's the dollars on those premiums?
It's, well, I can tell you the overall, uh, see if I have it. It's in here somewhere.
And what's, what's the, that, and what's the stop gap? Is it over, anything over a million or over two million or what is it?
Um, I'm trying to, and, uh, it's not that high, uh, because to give you an idea, that's seven point three percent increase in the stop loss. When you average it in with all of our, uh, insurance coverage, uh, brings our insurance coverage overall, uh, year over year to, uh, a one and a half percent increase. Um, and so I can get, I have to get the total premium cost, uh, for the, uh, for the stop loss insurance. It's kind of in here somewhere.
Just for the sake of time, you can find out later. And I'd like to know what that number is, but I think it'd be good for the board eventually, and maybe you're going to do this later, but a report that shows the premiums that we receive through our, because we charge a premium to our staff.
Correct.
Less the, uh, claims and the stop gap to kind of see where we are. I'd like to get just a, how mu, how much we spend, two point five, eight billion? But then we have so many claims and we have, where are we at on that?
That's right. So whatever the, I mean, I will get you those figures, but, um, the figures for next year are one point five percent higher.
Yeah, which is great.
Figures from the previous year, which is about the lowest it's ever been, but I can get you what those dollar, actual dollar figures are.
See where that's at.
Um, I can tell you one thing that I didn't mention is, um, they, uh, i- i- offered us even further protection. A lot of, uh, our biggest cost factors out there are, are basically our, our high cost claimants, right? Uh, we'll, we'll have maybe less than ten, um, uh, a year, um, that really, um, drive our expenses on our insurance plan. Uh, and, um, Sun Life, uh, requested that, um, you know, this additional service, which is, uh, it's like a concierge service for folks, like if you get a, um, like a cancer, um, uh, diagnosis, a lot of times you don't know where to go. You're just listening to one doctor. But what if you want a second opinion or something to that effect? So they provide that concierge service, um, for those. Um, because people are making more educated decisions, they tend to, it tends to actually drive our costs down. So they, they are eating the cost, which was three dollars per person, um, uh, per month on that. Uh, and then anyone who signs up for it, um, they are going to lower, um, the, uh, the, the cap amount uh, that the county will have to pay, uh, for that person on the stop loss. So, uh, it's a little complicated. It's an additional service for our employees, particularly the ones who need it most, um, who are, are dealing with sickness in themselves or their family. Uh, and it's a, you know, potentially a cost saving for us as well.
Sounds good. I'll get with you on what I'm looking for on that other, I think, we get information for the board.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you that.
Um, so alternative one, do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We moved item number seven. We've already handled six. Consideration to approve change order number three for task order twenty-two dash zero zero six with Pon and Company for Stormwater Master Plan.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. Um, this is a change order request for the Stormwater Master Plan. Um, the original scope focused on the southern portions of the county. This will bring in the northern portions of the county. Um, and I can answer any questions if you, try to answer any questions if you have any, but staff recommends, uh, approval, alternative one.
And there's room within the grant, um, that's paying for this, so all we have to do is the match effectively.
So what's the timeframe we'll get in this report if we, since we're adding this to, is it going to delay the whole thing or we're going to get a sudden?
They've been kind of, uh, continuing on, uh, with this as well, um, because they realized that you can't really do the southern port portion, uh, without tying in all other areas to the county, so, uh, it shouldn't delay. Uh, we, they actually, they actually submitted, um, a draft to meet the grant requirements in October.
Okay.
Um, and so they're actually on schedule.
Okay. Any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously. Item number eight, consideration to approve change order one to task order twenty-one dash twenty-five dash zero zero four with Robert Civil Engineering for the FDR E, uh, for Ash Road Design and Construction Management.
Yes, sir. So this is a deduction of sixty-five thousand dollars to our agreement with Roberts for this project. Um, don't get too excited. It is being moved to another agreement. Sorry. Um, but it is a deduction to, to account for the roads that we removed from the, or we didn't approve in the Ranger contract that moved to the McClendon, um, L-Meg agreement. Um, so this is a deduction for those roads.
I saw the negative. I got excited.
I'm sorry. It's why we did this one first though. Um, staff recommends alternative one.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number nine, consideration to approve change order number one to Lemig twenty-two two support and CM service agreement with Robert Civil, Roberts Civil Engineering.
Yes, sir. So this change order has two items. The first one being the design and construction management for improvements to the Sand Hill complex, uh, which is thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, and then you see request two is the sixty-five thousand that's moved over from the, um, Ash Roads work, uh, to this agreement. So the total, um, is seventy-eight thousand, two hundred dollars for this change order. Staff recommends alternative one.
Questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number ten, new business consideration to approve change order number one for task order twenty-two dash twenty-five dash zero zero six for the T-Spots intersection design and construction management with Robert Civil Engineering.
Yes, sir. So staff did request this change order from Robert Civil Engineering for, uh, two additional intersections. Um, Hodgville at Scuffletown Road and Hodgville at Forest Haven Road. Staff recommends alternative one.
Is that a question on that one? The, the, what are, what are we going to do with, uh, Scuffletown?
I mean, this, this is the design, um, for. Yeah, and so since we are going to make a single contract with Hodgville resurfacing and the three roundabouts, um, I.
It can be all one thing at one time.
Yeah, I said, y- 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 you know, rather than come back in afterwards and address a turn lane into Forest Haven and a turn lane out of Scuffletown and into, um, uh, Scuffletown. Um, I said, you know, let's just do everything at once. So when we do that one contract, we'll have the resurfacing, the three roundabouts, uh, and these improvements all in one contract.
Makes sense. By the way, I got complaints because we improved the road in Scuffle.
Yeah, so did we. Traffic is going too fast.
Now you created traffic. I can't win.
Can't win for losing.
Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consideration to approve award of PO twenty-three dash REQ dash oh one one to Dobbs Equipment for the purchase of a tractor and boomax for the Public Works Department.
Yes, sir. So we did post an RFQ, uh, to purchase this item. We did receive three submittals. Um, the breakdown's on your staff report. Staff recommends alternative one, uh, which is awarded to Dobbs Equipment LLC.
I'm extremely excited to see this on the agenda, because I know district one, three, and four benefit greatly from this piece of machinery. Yeah. Because the ones we have now, they're, they're in the shop more than they are actually running.
You can't get anything done.
No, this is very good.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve. Nobody has any questions. I need it.
All right. Motion to approve by, uh, Mr. Um, Deloach, second by, Mr. Floyd. Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously. I don't know when we bought a big excavating piece equipment, have we, in a while? Yeah.
No.
Consider, uh, item number twelve, consideration to approve for purchase orders for the purchased equipment for new fire engines.
Yes, sir. So we did post an RFQ. Um, we listed numerous pieces of equipment that the fire department needed, uh, for the new engines that are being purchased. Um, we also were able to, um, add some extra hose sections based on a hose inventory and work that they just recently did. Um, so those were added as well. Um, there were four submittals on that RFQ. We were able to do a line item award so that we're getting the best, uh, price for each item, which is why you see four different POs. Um, staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions, discussion, or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve an amendment to the coastal incentive grant award agreement for the Stormwater Master Plan, extending it, the timeframe for the master plan.
Good afternoon. Oh, sorry. So Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Uh, the grant that this relates to is for the Stormwater Master Planning, and at the end of September, the water modeling, the modeling was about eighty percent complete. And so this just extends the deadline on that until March. And, uh, by this point, I think the modeling is mostly finished. So, uh, staff recommends alternative number one, approve the amendment to the coastal incentive grant award agreement.
Questions or motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh forty-nine to amend the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Okay, this amendment's actually for fiscal year twenty-three and, uh, yes, sir. Yeah, the, uh, staff report and, uh, resolution has that in there. Uh, but, uh, this one was kind of talked about in some previous meetings. This is allocating the funding for the full depth reclamation roads, uh, L-Meg twenty-two two roads and a couple of other miscellaneous items. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. And it passes unanimously for the budget year twenty-two three. Item number fifteen, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash fifty to appoint Scott Morgan to the Tax Assessor Board to fulfill the unexpired term of office for the, uh, third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to approve for Mr. Scott Mor- Morgan as recommended by Commissioner District, um, Deloach for the third district to fulfill the term of office for Mr. Lowell Morgan.
Sounds good. Mr. Deloach, like me that motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Morgan.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve Scott Morgan to the Tax Assessor Board to fulfill the expired term in the third district. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing that, it passes unanimously. I think that concludes all the ordinary business of the meeting tonight. We'll see if there's any reports from staff.
Yeah, I'll just give you real quick on, um, on a, a couple of major items. So Oglethorpe Power, we're continuing along, uh, with our, uh, work with them. We had a long meeting again this morning, uh, via teleconference, um, and they will be coming into town on, on the thirtieth of this month. Uh, and, um, kind of moving towards resolution, but everything looks, um, uh, looks like it's at this point of, uh, that, uh, w- we'll be able to, um, meet all of our expectations and hopes, uh, with them with regards to the reuse. So, uh, they've been a, a great group of folks to work with. Um, uh, and also on roads, um, if you get an opportunity, um, take, take a ride down, uh, Old Tusculum. That's a kind of an important one because that's the first road that we did with this micro-surfacing treatment. Um, that is where we, um, uh, essentially, um, uh, go to, uh, a more of a maintenance stature on roads uh, before it gets to a critical point. Uh, and it's about a third as much as, uh, resurfacing. And it'll add ten years to the life of the road. You generally do this after ten years. Roads last for twenty, so that means, um, Old Tusculum should be, uh, potentially good for another twenty. Uh, and it really does look like a brand new road. Um, they, all they have left is the striping on it. Uh, they've, um, they've done our first rounds of the, uh, of the chip seal on the FDR. I have our, um, I haven't been able to really get a good gauge on it. They do chip seal a little differently than we do it in-house. Uh, they put kind of a, uh, a sand as a top surface on it, uh, so that as that begins to kind of, um, dissipate, I think you'll, we'll get a better idea of the quality of the road. Um, but they've done that on Archer and, uh, Old Dixie Highway. Uh, and I think they're working on, um, uh, Mount Pleasant and Old Augusta.
They do that sand because of the rising oil out of the asphalt or is that a thing?
Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure. It's, I, we, we don't do that when we do ours. Um, I have a, so when we hire them to do theirs, I'm, I'm anticipating that the product is going to come out better. Uh, but it's just very tough to gauge right now.
The emulsions is the liquid.
Yeah.
And the little pebbles we use with the, you know, the chip and seal, don't get into the cracks and crevices. And that sand probably makes more of a solid, when that.
That's what I'm guessing.
Sand, it makes more of a solid layer before you put the rock on top. And that takes a lot of moisture that's going to get into it, seals those cracks good.
And, and it's, we do a two-layer, um, chip seal. They do a three-layer in sand. So I'm anxious to see, um, kind of the, the end result on it, um, because it's obviously. Because it's obviously a lot less expensive to do that to road. And if it comes out essentially with a very similar appearance, um, you know, it, we'll be talking to EOM to see if we can, um, you know, kind of mimic the, the process that McLendon used. So that's the thought on that.
A lot of good common sense there, putting the sand down, let the emulsions get in there and.
Yeah.
Fill it in, yeah.
But we shall see. If not, worse comes to worse. It's a, it's a base treatment essentially, if we have to ask halted. So we don't really, we don't lose on the equation.
The emulsions is, it's a, I don't know much about, it's a chemical, I know it's a liquid. It's petroleum-based, yeah.
I think it's a petroleum-based product, but I don't, only honestly. Looks like it.
That's, that's all I got.
Seems just like a good idea. I hadn't even thought about that. It's just like a good idea to do that. Anything from the other staff? Our clerk?
I don't have anything. It's in your calendars. I just remind you all to look at those at the end of the week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we still looking at a workshop in Atlanta on the January meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're all set for that.
Great. I'll go around the horn with our commissioners, if there's any thing from each of the commissioners.
Yeah, I got one thing. I want to apologize to all y'all for getting so animated earlier. I, I let my, especially Roger, I seem like I always sail on you, but I didn't mean to get so wound up. But I do think we need to address this industrial zoning on these mines. We just, we, me and Wesley talked at break about it. And that seems to just set people afire. And, uh, I think we need to somehow come with a variance within the zoning it already is, or a something.
A conditional use in AR1.
That's what we've talked about.
Yeah, well, we need to, but we need to do something. Because it's just, people still seem to think that this, this industrial, it's a, it's a pit, it's a hole.
Final zoning for the property, obviously it's going to turn into something else, so it's.
Yeah, I don't know how we address it, but.
When you see it on the parcel match, it just says I want.
Right. And it really causes us problems.
I, I can tell you, Teresa is working on, on one thing for industrial, which is the, uh, storage, uh, storage container yards, um, to look at, uh, conditional zoning for that, that we hope to get to for the next meeting. But on this, there are two options when we were looking at it. If you recall, one of them was that we can make it conditional in AR1, a conditional use in AR1. The second is you could make, um, all, um, uh, all landmines, uh, I'm, landmines, uh, surface mines.
It's definitely a landmine.
That's what it is.
Forty on that one. All surface mines, uh, PD, where you can just simply put, uh, a bunch of conditions, uh, on it for approval. But it's kind of two options you can go there. One's very simple, one's a little bit more complicated, but it gives you a lot more.
If you did PD.
Control.
I'd like to review those and us discuss it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would tell you, because, because when he brought it to the break, I was thinking about when he said about the two-acre pond. That's what I'm trying to do on my property.
Yeah, that would be fun.
And I'd hate to have to know, I got to get it zoned industrial because I want a pond. So my grandkids can fish in it, you know?
I'm not saying we don't have public hearings either.
No, 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 no.
To get, not that, but, yeah.
For either, you would.
No-brainer, that a business where I was going to have thirty or forty acres.
Automatically, it's advertised as an industrial rezoning, and it sets off this fear, you know, that you kind of have to dial back to.
If it was a conditional use for a pond or issues for surface, uh, mining, I think it would have less impact from that standpoint of the zoning.
Sure.
That was one of my questions was what she had.
So Tim, you're saying we're going to look at container yards?
Yes, uh, as, as a conditional zoning in industrial.
Oh, I didn't realize we were looking at that. Seems like that'll be a big problem, but that's just my opinion.
There's probably appropriate places for it and the need, you know, if it's.
Are we going to have pop-up ports?
No. Well, here's the problem. They're, they're zoned by, they could potentially be a zone by right in industrial, that's the concern. And unless you make them conditional, like we did junkyards, um, uh, someone who has an industrial property.
Heavy, heavy eye right now could just do it.
Yeah, heavy eye. Or, or who has the buffer room to do it, three hundred feet, uh, could essentially put the pop-up yards in there. So, um, my, our concern is that we really need to look at making that, um, a conditional. So even if you have an industrial zone property, you have to come back to the board uh, and go through the process again to get that conditional approval.
Or we could make it a non-permitted use of containers in industrial.
All right, well, I'm tired and hungry.
You can make it prohibited.
So I'll, I'll talk to you about this another night. So I don't want to get in a deep discussion on it.
There's a Chick-fil-A back there, too.
Yeah.
Fires, everybody begin calls about fires, Tim knows of it, getting hammered.
I have Clint here.
Clint's helped me out one day, let's. We need, yeah, because they're burning, uh, they're burning next to Autumn Woods. They're actually out of compliance.
You mean large scale or just small residential?
Large scale.
Large scale, so they have to, anything above.
Getting hammered.
Six by six, six feet by six feet or something. It requires a, a burn permit. And those burn permits have conditions on it. And do you want to discuss this real quick, because you and I discussed it?
Uh, yes, there is a, there's a distance between the houses and where these land clearing burns are taking place. And also there's a limit on the number they can have within a certain acreage. Um, and the one on Autumn Woods, we obviously found out was not in compliance. So we had Georgia Forestry go out there, uh, went by there earlier today, and it looked like they had solved that problem. There wasn't any smoke in the subdivision, they weren't burning on that side of the property either.
Over they continue to do that. I'm getting calls on this every day. It had, it slacked off his last few days. There's ash in people's pools, on their cars, on baby strollers where they're welcoming their kids. I mean, it's coming from that place near Autumn Woods. It's coming from, uh, the place on McCall, um, that punch drunk, what is, what's the?
Omni Trax?
Omni Trax. There's another one, another development off of Hodgeville where they're getting hammered. They just smoke, people are getting smoke in their houses. You mentioned an air curtain on bigger stuff. Is that, would that help some of the ash and the, and the smoke if we required that? All these big berms, burns?
Well, an air curtain's clearly going to knock most of your smoke down.
That would be a huge help. Is that something we would look at? And I'm not talking about small, one-house residential stuff, but these major things, they're piling up highs of the sky and burning them off, and they last for days.
Where are they burning off?
Timber, just.
They're clearing land.
Clearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Just land clearing.
And there's, and they've got a, they've got a lot of land left in, um.
There'll be tons more.
Uh, in Omni Trax. And, uh, and I will tell you, the, uh, the northern port, uh, portion of Gitzie is also, and that, that's the one that's closest to, um, to residential. So I don't know, I mean.
Isn't a lot of that state-regulated?
It, it is, but you can, the county can put, um, additional requirements on it. If you recall, a while back, we, we used to have the no-burn-on-Sunday rule, but it was very impossible to enforce because, um, you know, a lot of the forestry guys aren't working on Sunday. So, um, and they're the only ones who can enforce it for us, so. So, I mean, we could look at options out there, maybe what some other jurisdictions are doing, um, and then.
We had ordinances, though, did we not enforce those ourselves?
What?
If we, if we had our ordinances in place, a county ordinance, could we not enforce that ourselves? Or could, would we have to still reach out?
If it was, if it was our ordinance.
We could enforce that, code enforcement, then. We need something. I saw them burn at Gitzie, the front portion of that, and they did it with a chipper. They'd chip everything up, they burned it, and it was gone in a few hours. Boom, done and over. I mean, that's how.
It was one of those round, rounder tankers.
They just fed it into this chipper and it piled up highs like a dinosaur, and they burned it off, and it was done. I mean, it's, but what they're doing now, obviously they're just piling up logs and burning them. But, but that one was really, really efficient.
Maybe, maybe the chief and the manager could get together and come up some ideas and recommend to us.
Okay.
Yeah, be careful. I love getting out on the farm and having a good burn pile.
Well, that's different.
Well, I know, and I don't know how, you know, we got, uh, yeah.
I mean, if you're burning acres of tempers while it's happening, essentially.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I just had it burn the other day on, on my property, I called the chief about it because I have my, uh, uh, trimmings from my trees and shrubberies and all, and it's a pretty good pile.
Yeah, yeah.
But it burns and it's gone in a few hours, and then my neighbors are so far down the road, it.
Well, what I would imagine is you would make it applicable only to, like, your big land clearing, your commercial land clearing burns. And also, like, if something's happened, let's say, killed their road somewhere, some clearance of land is a mile from somebody, I couldn't imagine, you know, you would want to put it there, but, you know, if it's within, let's say, a thousand feet.
Yeah, proximity to a neighborhood.
It would basically be in response to a complaint anyway.
Pretty much.
So y'all come up with some recommendations that we might look at, at helping?
We don't want to be overbearing on it, you know what I'm saying?
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Deloach?
I'm good.
Yeah, I got something right fast, like, I don't know if you was here, but they, there was some people that don't have a bed and breakfast out there on McCall Road. And they couldn't get the building right. So instead of having a bed and breakfast, they have a venue there and.
Waters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
You've heard about it?
Yes, sir. The planning board has tabled the conditional use application to this month uh, based on some neighbor concerns they were going to get with.
They do it nine-thirty, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. And they can't call the sheriff's department because some judge in Springfield.
Well, and the sher, I haven't had a chance to call the sheriff because I'm, I'm getting calls too because people are thinking I'm, I'm their commissioner. But, um, one of the sergeants told them that the board of commissioners granted them permission to do it. So they can't enforce, or they can't go against what the board of commissioners have done. But I think they're getting confused with, there's still noise. I mean, they can't be blaring music at eleven forty-five at nighttime.
Well, and, and I'll give you the.
I'll read you what they, what they said, the, the judge told them. The judge presiding over the issue determined that due to the county commissioners granting a permit license to hold events at their location, the owner and venue are exempt from state and local regulations regarding noise. And therefore, the sheriff's department can't do anything about it. He informed us that the only people that can do anything are the county commissioners, since that is who issued the permit to begin with.
And the, and I believe Katie did talk to someone in the sheriff's office today, or talked to the sheriff. And the sheriff is going to do some research over, A, what judge said that, and B.
If a judge said that, honestly.
And what, or if a judge said that, and B, um, what, you know, what, which one of his, if any of his officers.
Judge.
Yeah. Sometimes things change through translation.
But, but I can tell you that's incorrect. I mean, we, we, we enforce, um, noise ordinances on, on industrial all the time. We do it, we did it for Interfor, Forest remembers that. You know, we had a guy out there with a decibel meter, um, uh, monitoring, uh, the, the sawmills, uh, volume. So we can certainly do it for a, a bed and breakfast. That's, I mean, I think they're having.
It's not a bed and breakfast.
They're having a vent venue, yeah.
They have weddings and parties and all this kind of stuff.
Well, I think the main thing that's got them fired up is after this weekend, when the sheriff's office said that, hey, we can't monitor that, and that really upset them. So, I mean, that's good to know that that's, that's not the case.
That's right.
There's confusion somewhere.
However, I will say, I don't think the sheriff's office has the decibel meters. I think that's, um, I think that's code enforcement. So, um, we, we have to, we're, we're going to have a follow-up call with the sheriff's office just on that because, you know, code enforcement have to wait until it's beyond a certain hour at night, a certain distance from the property line and, and measure.
Do we need to get decibel meters for the deputies? Do the deputies need decibel meters, or?
They may have them. I don't know if they have, if they don't, but, but I just know that, that's generally considered a.
It is, yeah.
Something that.
Fortunately, those, that's usually at night when code enforcement really is not.
And on weekends, yeah.
You know, it's just the sheriff, deputies.
But we, we, we will, we, that was, we became aware of that yesterday. And so we're going to, um, continue to do some research on it. But, but they, um, but they're going to come in front of you next month, um, in December, to extend that conditional use permit, is that right?
Because they're trying to sell the property.
Yeah, correct, they're trying to sell it. So the new owners are trying to get the conditional use. And code enforcement is aware of the recent complaints. We've also put out an open records request with the sheriff's department to find out what the complaint volume at the Waters Estate has been. Early indications are that it's not so much, but we'll, we'll find out.
Come up about, they got a dirt road and they had a dust and all, but I don't, I don't think we can do anything about that, you know?
I mean, we've got to have event facilities in the county and should have them, so, I mean, it's, we'll figure it out.
But they must have some wild parties out there. Maybe I need to go out there.
Well, they hadn't invited us.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Looper? Anything else?
I have a few, few things. Wildhogs have invaded Silverwood. I probably have mentioned that to some of y'all. They claim it's because of the rezoning to the, you know, with the warehouse construction. I don't know, I, I don't doubt that that plays a part. But if y'all would support Tim, if we need to help in any kind of funding on, with the DNR, should, hopefully we won't. But just consider all the revenue those warehouses are generating to help these folks.
I would support it because I've told you earlier, I've, I've talked to a couple of people in there as well, and they've verified, they've seen some of the damage.
And they, they're picking the nicer yards for some reason.
Well, these are smart pigs, if they know we rezone property, then they must know where the nice yards are.
There's really an easy solution for that.
I, I haven't heard of it ever being a problem, and I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at it.
I think the board will support DNR and what funding we got to do to get it corrected. But I don't know that it's related to rezoning the property.
I, I.
They could be coming in because they just came in.
I, I, I don't know the answer, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It surprises me because the river's down, I'm surprised. Usually, you know, it's a river coming up is what pushes it up.
River, as low as I've ever seen it.
Yeah.
And, and so, just so you know where we stand on that, um, uh, we've been working with the sheriff's office on it. They've reached out to DNR. DNR said, you need to, they don't, they don't trap, you need to communicate with the game warden. Game management, that's right. Uh, and we are in the process of trying to communicate with them on how to move forward. Another option is you can, um, you can, we can try and work with a private trapper if, if we can't get any progress with the game management, so.
Bacon.
What?
Bacon. Bacon celebration session.
T, T. Got to capture, I mean, you can't, they can't shoot them in there.
No, I'm sorry.
Legally, they can't shoot them in there.
They're in the county. Get them up with some solutions for us, and we'll, we'll support it, we'll help you. What else you got?
Yeah, um, floating dock at Abercorn, have we really, is it kind of?
Yes, um, uh, I haven't, um, who did I talk? I'm, I'm trying to remember, we, I just talked about this last week.
Seems like things get hot with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and then it.
Oh, I remember what it was, yeah. So they got a quote, um, but that's about as far as they went.
Okay.
Uh, and so we then have to look at, um, uh, what we have to do. I talked, that's who I talked to Seth about it. What we actually have to do to, we have to do some additional clearing there, um, in order to, uh, put it in. And then, um, look to see, because there's some engineering involved, um, because of the current. So, but I, I did mention that to Seth.
Got you. Okay. And don't, November eleventh, next Friday, next Friday, is the Veterans Day Ceremony at eleven AM. If anybody's around, come out. It's at the Veterans Park at eleven AM.
The ninth.
I'm sorry?
Eleventh.
Eleven.
Yeah, it's eleventh, the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. That's the history, that's the.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Do we have an executive session?
I think Jamie wanted to go back there for not asking.
All right, do we...
Push it off.
We don't have any executive session minutes to approve, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burdette, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, we stand in German.